All right. Good evening, everybody. I am going to thank staff and everybody for helping us get here tonight. Welcome soon to be Commissioner Kelly to our ranks. And I'm gonna go ahead and open the Town of Fairfax Planning Commission here July 15th, 2021. And I'll go ahead and read the essential items here. We're not having in-person physical meetings because of the California Executive Orders that are referenced in our agenda. You can watch us live at HTTPS backslash backslash WWW dot Town of Fairfax dot org backslash watch dash live dash two backslash or the Community Media Center of Marin TV Channel 27 online or on your local Marin television set. You can find the town's agenda online at the Town of Fairfax website and click on the Zoom link and join us by Zoom, or you can call in at 1669-900-6833 or 1346-248-7799 to use webinar ID 84270521962. Members of the public may provide public comment during meeting using one of the following options. On Zoom, you can select the raise hand function during the public comment time and you'll be unmuted when it's your turn. If you're calling in, press star nine during the public comment time to raise your hand and star six to be unmuted to speak. Prior to 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting, members of the public may submit written comments to the planning commission. If comments are received after the circulation of the commission meeting packet but prior to the meeting, they will be sent to the planning commission, will be part of the meeting record, but will not be read aloud. I just want to say that our links to the items on tonight's agenda did not appear on the website today, but they were there previously. So we apologize for any inconvenience this might be to any members of the public who wish to look at the packet today. If you are listening to this, you can email Ben Berto or Lyndon Neal at the Town of Fairfax, B Berto at Town of Fairfax dot org or L Neal, N E A L, at Town of Fairfax dot org and ask them to send you any of the items on tonight's agenda and they'll send you the staff report and packet information for that item. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and ask to do roll call.
Okay, Fragoso?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Harbor, absent, Green, absent, Jansen?
Yeah.
Kelly?
You're.
Swift?
Yeah.
Chair Newton?
Here.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda. See if anybody has any changes, comments, et cetera, on the agenda, and if not, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move approval of our agenda as a chance.
Great. Fragoso, is there a second?
That could.
Fragoso motion, second, Swift. And all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? No. I did that by voice vote because I knew it would be unopposed unanimously. The meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at mission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Next on our agenda are public comments on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission must do so by email or in person via Zoom in the manner described above. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. All interested persons are invited to participate in public hearings in order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view. Members of the audience should limit presentations to three minutes, provide their comments by email as described above, state their views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first via email to be entered into the record. So I'm gonna take a pause here and see if anyone's got their hands raised. Maybe Tamela, you can help me if you see or.
I do not see any hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. In that case, I'm going to close public comment on non-agenda items. And there are no items on consent calendar, so we are gonna get right to the fun part of the meeting and swearing in of our new commissioner.
Okay. Mr. Kelly, can you repeat after me? This is the oath of allegiance. I state your name.
I Brett Kelly.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
Congratulations. Consider yourself sworn in. And if I might be so bold, Chair Newton, if I could just ask Mr. Kelly in a few words to describe his background, because I've heard it and read it, but some commissioners may not be familiar with it, and I think it it tells us, leads us to some knowledge of qualifications.
Okay, well, I'm a practicing architect. I am part of a large international firm. I typically do very large projects and have worked with planning commissions and departments in most of the projects that I have worked on for healthcare, public service buildings, et cetera. Most recently, South San Francisco, Santa Cruz, and Dublin, for instance, working with those municipalities to make new facilities within their jurisdictions.
Thank you.
So I'm looking forward to helping ours.
Welcome, Commissioner Kelly. Is that with two Es in Kelly or one?
Just one.
Just one. Okay, I saw it, Linda. Note, I saw it with two on the website. Thank you. It's good to have you here.
Thank you very much.
I think this job is made better when this planning commission is a full commission. So I think everybody's got a really good perspective to share. The more that we have people who have great experience, I think the better to round us out. So it's good to have you here. With that, I think we can launch right into 85 Belinus Road and hear the staff.
Hey. So at the June 17th, at the June 17th meeting, the planning commission continued the matter again and directed the applicant and staff to provide the following. The commission wanted to receive the results of the town arborist's probing of the redwood tree roots before taking action. And they asked him to see, to do additional probings to see if the sign could be moved back an additional foot from where it's shown in the site plan. And you indicated that if large roots are located by the town arborist in either location, the arborist shall indicate whether the sign footings and electrical wiring design can be modified to avoid cutting the large roots. And you directed staff to notice the project for an exception to the code section that requires freestanding signs to be located 10 feet back from the public right of way, because the sign is only going to be five feet back from the public right of way. Our original staff report included staff's recommendation that the sign be approved in its proposed location and in its proposed sign. We identified, we noted our determination that the the commercial building on Belinus Road at 85 Belinus is larger than any of the other commercial buildings on Belinus Road. The design of the building with its many windows and upper exterior deck makes it impractical to erect a multi-business commercial directory sign on the building itself. We noted that commercial businesses need to be able to effectively communicate their location. And at 85 Belinus, we have a number of businesses that have no on-street frontage. They front on the rear parking lot. And so monument signs are an appropriate way to convey this information on a site such as this that has multiple tenants. And with regards to the location of the freestanding sign, not maintaining the 10-foot required setback from the right-of-way. We believe that the setback is the minimum necessary so that the sign is going to be visible to vehicles driving by the site, giving them enough time to turn into the parking lot. The entrance to the parking lot is just past the proposed monument sign. So the town arborist did go out to the site and he recommended some conditions which Tamela, I would like to share my screen. Can you guys see my screen?
Not really.
Okay, I do this wrong every time.
Well, I can see it. It's just small.
There's a and it's red. Different things up there, Linda. We can see both the A and the Zoom invitation.
Can you read it, please?
Yeah, I'm gonna read it. I just wanted, I just wanted you guys to also have it to see it because I made some, I sent you one earlier today, and then one of the commissioners pointed out that I, that another change would be appropriate. So I am gonna read it to you. So the resolution has all the red lines. The only changes I made between the last meeting and this one was based on the direction of the town arborist. And so he was concerned about the 24-inch circumference piers that were gonna go underneath this sign. He believes it can be done in a less, in a way that will impact the roots less. And so we've added condition two. I see the numbering's a little off there, but it's supposed to be condition two. That a building permit shall be obtained from the town after the submittal of engineered plans for the erection of the monument sign, including the recommendation of the arborist on July 14th, 2021, that the sign be engineered with 12-inch concrete footings with Simpson Strong Tie ornamental column bases or the equivalent post or column bases or other engineered support system that keeps the circumference of the below-ground footings to 12 inches or less and that the electrical line be placed in an above-ground conduit. And then we added. We removed the, we removed the section where we were requiring the arborist report because we've obtained that and the town arborist would like to be the one to inspect. I thought I included that somewhere. Oh, hang on. No, dear.
I think it's number nine.
A number nine. Thank you, Cindy. So number nine, and the numbering somehow didn't get quite right. We added Ray Moritz, the town arborist, shall be onsite during the excavation and installation of the signed support posts to ensure his recommendations are complied with. And once the construction is completed, the arborist shall provide a letter to the town indicating that the installation occurred in compliance with his recommendations. So we're recommending that you approve the project and adopt the resolution as proposed and that's wrong too. The date should be changed. I could have sworn I did. I changed the date, but anyway. So the date at the end should say July 15th, 2021. And that would conclude our report. We're recommending that you approve the sign in the proposed location per the recommendation of the town arborist.
Through the chair. Madam Chair. I have a clarifying question for staff. I thought I read something in the arborist's report about the distance of those supporting peers from the front fence. Wasn't he saying that he would rather be closer to the fence than further back, closer to the trees?
The applicant or the town arborist?
The arborist.
Our town arborist was instructed to go out and, and look at the proposed site and a site one foot further into the redwood grove. He wasn't asked to do borings anywhere between the proposed sign and the fence.
No, I understand. So the, he was to determine whether it should be placed where it is or one foot closer to the redwood trees.
Right.
That one of the commissioners had asked if that would be better, if that would be okay. But the arborist indicates that it should stay where it is currently proposed and not a foot closer to the redwood trees.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm not sure that was completely clear in your amended reso unless I missed it.
Well, the reso, you know, you guys always have the reso cite the plans. And so if you look at condition one, it cites the plans received on 4/8/21 with the sign located two feet east of the existing fence. That's, so those plans show the sign where the mock-up sign, there's the site plan shows where the mock-up sign is, and it's two feet east of the fence.
I get it. So he approved that.
Right.
Okay, and not moving it any closer. Okay, I see why you did not add that language. And the only other thing is on the staff report, page 31234, paragraph four about the town arborist's advice says the sign foundation could be modified from the 12-inch footings. That should be 24-inch footings, right?
Yes, yes, you're correct. Yes, you're correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? I can't see anybody. Maybe Tamela, if you see a hand raised.
I see Commissioner Swift has her hand raised.
So the other piece on the reso was initially the requirement from the town arborist was also to have above-ground conduit for the lighting, and that was an item 11 in the reso that was attached to the staff report, but that was missing in.
So I added that under what's supposed to be condition two at the end. That the, and that the electrical be placed in an above-ground conduit.
You did read that.
So I'll read it again. Can you guys see my cursor?
Yes.
So this is the condition where I added it at the end. So the sign shall be engineered with 12-inch concrete footings, blah, 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 blah. And that the electrical be placed in an above-ground conduit. At the end, what's supposed to be condition two, but the number, I don't know what happened with the numbering. It looked fine on my screen when I sent it.
Can you move your cursor, Linda, because you're covering? So mine, yeah, mine, mine stops at 12 inches or less, the version I have.
Yes, that's why, that's why I wanted to share my screen because it was pointed out to be my Commissioner Swift after I sent you guys this, that really nowhere in there had I talked about that, the above-ground electrical conduit. Yeah, the applicants had agreed to do that in writing, so I had in writing from them that they agreed to the above-ground electrical conduit, but it really should be in the resolution too. Yep.
So just for clarification, the resolution that you just read isn't anything that we have a copy of because of that conduit, right?
You have, you have everything except this, except this sentence and that the electrical be placed in an above-ground conduit, because I sent you the version with my yellow marks. That's, those are the few things that I had added after the town arborist went out. Everything was very last minute because the arborist was testifying at some legal hearing that I couldn't get anything. It was stressful.
Can you tell me where paragraphs eight and nine are, Linda?
I think that's a numbering thing, that, you know, nine's supposed to be eight.
Okay, prior to is.
Let me, let me pull this up. Let me pull this up on my computer, at my computer, because it, I mean, on my town computer, because it certainly didn't look like that the last time I looked at it. But, you know, everything was linked on the website too, the last time I looked at it, so.
You did send a red line and then a clean version.
I did? Okay.
I'm pretty sure.
I don't know anymore.
But the paragraph H should start with the Ray Moritz.
Yeah, see, it's very odd. It's all fine on my.
And paragraph 10, the no trees may be removed. I'm just being persnickety.
Yeah, eight supposed, eight supposed to start with the applicant shall comply with all applicable local, right? Nine is supposed to start with Ray Moritz, the town arborist shall be onsite. 10 is the arborist shall provide a report of his observations. 11 is no trees may be removed.
All right, well, then seven is the applicant and its heirs.
Yes. So all, what I removed is I removed at the beginning of nine, we had required, we had required that Kent Julen, you know, do the work and we, we now want our town arborist to do what we were, because Kent Julen said that the roots could be cut. He said that the root, the redwood roots could be cut as long as you did certain things. And that was not acceptable, and Ray, our town arborist does not agree that that's appropriate.
And if you take what you set out and print a final version of it without the changes, it looks okay. Other than you've got like a double three, so number nine is Ray Moritz, number 10 is the arborist should provide a report, so.
Yeah, and I do not, so when I look in my file where I filed this, it looked, the numbering is fine. So I don't know why me attaching it and trying to send it to you guys in an email would, would mess the numbering up. It looks fine on my computer. I can't explain it. So.
Through the chair.
But, but just remember that what we do when we're done with this is we accept all the changes. We make any changes that you guys make tonight, and then I make, I make them, and then the chair reviews them. So there's like two sets of eyes on it to make sure it's the final version before anyone signs it.
Through the chair.
Yeah, thank you, Linda. I'm well aware. That's why I'm being persnickety. Norma?
Yes, one more persnickety thing. There's a comment in there about no trees shall be removed. We never considered that any tree might be removed. I think the context was that no tree roots should be damaged or endangered. Removal was never a consideration. And so.
I have to refresh your guys' memory because you guys wanted that in because the concern was that when they started construction.
Oh, if they wanted to remove something, okay.
Something might have changed and they might decide that a tree needed to be removed for some reason, right? When they start digging.
Yeah.
So you guys actually wanted that in, and I think it's a good one to have there.
Yes, now that you've mentioned it, in that case, should they get going and then come up and say, oh, we couldn't do this without taking out the tree. They cannot do that. Yes.
Right, we don't, we don't want them to go to the tree committee for a tree removal. Planning commission might say, hey, then we want you to put the sign somewhere else, you know, we don't want to put it there. Yeah.
That's a good clarification. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for staff from the commissioners? So please raise your hand. I don't see any hands raised. And we can go out for the public hearing portion in a moment. I'm just gonna ask if Linda knows if the applicants or their representatives are here.
I know that Bob Sanders, he, he checked in before the meeting, so I believe that he's there. I'm not sure if Harry Hunt's there, but he, I bet he is. I bet he's there somewhere.
All right, well, I guess I'll open it up to the applicant. And if Mr. Sanders or Mr. Hunt would like to make any statement. And then you can go ahead and do so, and any of the commissioners have any questions, we can open it up to their questions of you before I go to the rest of the public. And Linda, if you could stop sharing just so we can see each other again, that'd be great.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Um, I just wanted to note, since I made application for this sign, my Labrador puppy is now a teenager. I know more than I'll ever know, need to know about arborists and roots, and your city manager is moving to my town, Sonoma, so.
Good for you.
This happened. But we're, we're all in agreement on the details of the requirements. We've gone over these in depth with Linda. Every time something evolves, we can deal with the 12-inch footing and we're gonna have our engineer figure out a way so the sign is safe with wind loads and we can deal with this. So that was the only last thing we had to think about, and we'll have it engineered and submitted to your, your Department of Buildings. So I think we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Mr. Hunt, if you want to say any words, please feel free. Otherwise, I'll ask if any commissioners have any questions for the applicant. We're an easygoing crew this evening. Here we go. So seeing no questions from the commissioners, I'm gonna open up the public hearing for any comments from the public. And I do see one member of the public, Dottie Mew, has her hand up, so we'll start with Dottie.
And Dottie, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak now. Thank you. Hi, Dottie, are you there?
Yes. Um, this is actually Ray Moritz using Dottie's computer.
Hi, Ray.
Hi. So I probed the various four holes and found a lot of roots in the holes that were the marked positions that were closer to the tree. And in the marked positions under the sort of sign mock-up, I found no roots of any significance. So I wanted to support that position for the sign.
Thank you so much, Ray. I really appreciate your calling in and clarifying that. And I know all the commissioners usually feel a great deal of relief when we have your expertise to help us. feel a great deal of relief when we have your expertise to help us make these decisions. And so I'm gonna do something a little different than I usually do, which is ask if any of the commissioners have any question for our member of the public, Mr. Ray Moritz, before I let him go. All right. Thank you so much, Ray. Really appreciate your, your help. As always, and let's see if there are any other folks in attendance with their hands raised, if they might wanna make any comments or ask any questions. And I don't see anyone else. So I am prepared to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And unless Ms. Fish tells me that we've got somebody at the last minute raising their hand, I'm gonna close. Thank you very, very much, Mr. Sanders, Mr. Hunt. Please continue to watch as we make our decision here. Thank you.
I'm wondering if we need much discussion or if the commission feels ready for a motion.
Well.
I'm ready.
Feel free to, to move forward as you wish, Commissioner Fregoso.
Okay, if, if I, if, if Tamela, if you don't see any hands up from commissioners saying they, they have additional comments, I would like to move approval of application number 2107, signed permit and exception to 10-foot setback requirement for the freestanding monument sign at 85 Bolinas Road, APN number 00212247, with all the additional information provided by our town arborist and entered into the record for the resolution this evening. Do we need to?
I did not hear that.
You did not hear.
I asked if there was a second of Chair, of Commissioner Fregoso's.
One second.
Okay, so motion for go so, second Jansen. And Linda, I'll let you take the roll call.
A Fregoso?
I.
Jansen?
Hi.
Kelly? Swift?
No, I still can't find the findings for this sign. I, I think it's too large for that location. So my vote is no. And there's space on the other side of the, of the driveway.
Okay, Chair Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did Commissioner Kelly vote?
Oh, did I just brush right over you? No, you voted. Yes, you voted.
We did, okay.
I did.
Good. Okay, so motion carries, right?
Yes, thank you.
There is, of course, a 10-day appeal period.
Thank you for the vice chair to follow up with that because I had barking dogs interrupting me here. How long is the appeal period?
There is a 10-day appeal period and I believe it's a $5 fee to the town clerk.
Is it 500 or did it go up?
It may be six now, staff. Appeal fee?
Let's just say six and, and that way if it's five, they'll be pleasantly surprised.
That's a good one. Thank you.
Go look this up before the meeting's over. All right.
I think it did go up to six. And rightly so with all, all the costs, all the staff time involved.
Yeah, believe it or not, it's still a subsidized process.
Oh, yes, I'm sure of it.
All right. Planning Director Berto, I think we're moving on to 403 Cascade.
Yes. Delightfully so. Thank you, both of Chair members of the commission. 403 Cascade was previously considered by your commission at the May 20th meeting and then continued once prior to this meeting to allow the opportunity, the opportunity, the applicant, the opportunity to provide the information requested by the commission. What you have before you is a project requesting demolition of an existing approximately 1,288 square foot family home that's been in the applicant's family for at least two generations. It's located on a mostly level 6,000 square foot lot that does down slope in the rear towards to San Sommo Creek. The recommended replacement home or proposed rec, replacement home would contain 1,136 square feet of habitable area on the first floor and 609 square feet of habitable area on the second floor, plus a 467 square foot attached garage, which would result in a total net habitable area of 1,745 square feet. It's also noted that there is a deck proposed on the rear facing San Sommo Creek. With the proposed 2.5 to 12 standing seam metal gable style roof, the building would have a maximum height of 22 feet, which is fairly modest in staff's opinion. At the time that the commission requested that continue the item at their May 20th meeting, they had two primary questions. The first was documentation of what is going on with respect to the town's creek setback requirements. And then the second was to provide some information regarding a landscaping, proposed landscaping. So the applicant has provided that information to the satisfaction of staff and I can, will be going into a little bit of detail about that. As noted, overall, the project is modest. At the proposed height, it's, it's almost four feet lower than the neighbor to the immediate west. And that on the second floor, that the, the side-facing windows are proposed to have a minimum plate height of six feet, which preserves privacy to the neighbors. The applicant is also shown on their landscaping and drainage plan, some CNO this landscaping in the front of the garage, which is drought tolerant and does it feature some attractive seasonal flowers that attract bees and things like that. It is noted that a new driveway is proposed to the west of the property, of the front of the property. And this will have some impacts on the two street sycamore trees. And for that reason, staff is including conditions that the applicant have a certified arborist provide, evaluate potential root impacts from the driveways proximity to the trees and proposed recommended measures to minimize those impacts. And those are things like minimizing cuts using either plywood or chips to absorb the, the compressive impact of vehicles going in and out of the site. Staff is also recommending that that driveway be shifted slightly further away from the property line to more or less center between the two street sycamores. So do consideration to minimize any impacts on the trees. In terms of design review, staff did something quite unusual and that is recommend that the commission consider allowing the applicant to raise the pitch to three and 12. And the reason staff is recommending this is twofold. Number one, the house itself is very modest in height. And so the approximately seven inch height increase that would occur if he increased the pitch to, from two and a half and 12 to three and 12 would only result in a seven inch height increase. Staff is familiar with what happens when you do that. You don't have to have interlocking standing seam. So the type of standing seam roof you have is less expensive. It also tends to afford for a little bit less worry around the edges of the eve in terms of waterproofing. So it's a little bit more of a standard design and, and so that's why staff is saying and we discussed this at May, that the commission consider allowing the applicant at his discretion to go up to a three and 12 roof and is so proposing that as a condition of approval in this, in this, in the resolution. The other issue has to do with the compliance with the town's creek setback standards. And I will read from the zoning section 17040040. Actually, I think that's 04040A, which reads, "No building accessory building structure or swimming pool shall be constructed closer to the top of the stream bank of the Fairfax and San Sommo Creeks than 20 feet or two times the average depth of the bank, whichever is greater, without authorization by variance, except for retaining walls and bulkheads which replace failing structures and which do not increase the height, width, length, or configuration of the original structure." And staff believes that the reason for that is twofold. Number one is to ensure that the, there is an adequate distance from the stream in riparian habitat and also to minimize the potential for flooding damages. Staff believes, given the inherent subjectivity of the term stream bank, that the basis on which the stream, the creek height should be considered is the 100-year floodplain. This is used elsewhere in the county, for example, the county of Marin, and directed the applicant to provide that measurement. And the reason why using 100-year flood boundary as the creek bank height works is it's not subjective. It provides for a creek boundary and width, overall width that on average occurs once every 100 years. So in practical terms, it, it really doesn't occur very often in that typical high water, which can be evidenced by the bare stones in the stream is much, much lower than that. The other aspect is if you start to look at creek banks as something that's simply the slope, you get into this subjective cycle where the downstream neighbor, for example, has a much lower stream bank before the property flattens out. And just upstream, you have an unbroken slope from the, the bare stream thread up the slope of more than 100 vertical feet. So here you have in close proximity, two slopes up from the creek, one of which is much lower and one of which is much higher, which, you know, if you're using some kind of subjective determination of stream bank as being based on slope, would, either one of those would suffice. So staff believes that the 100-year floodplain does provide an actual non-subjective determination. And I am going to share my screen and just queue up the. So what you have here is the diagram for the calculations that question engineering a reputable hydrological engineering firm in the county has provided. And what you can see with their calculations is that the depth of the 100-year floodplain at the house location is 7.5 feet. And so looking at the town's regulations, double that depth is 15 feet. And so you go up to the 15-foot height and you go to that distance from the top of double that height to the house and you can see that it's more than two times the distance. So staff believes that the applicant has satisfied the requirements of the town's stream or creek setback standards in providing this information for the commission.
I would assume there would be questions, but if anyone has a question of the staff, Commissioner Fregoso?
Thank you. I have a question similar to one we just discussed with 85 Bolinas in terms of what happens if there is a problem relocating the drive, it can't be where it is. It damages the trees. How do we know it shifts over? And how far can they go? I'm assuming they can't go and they cannot endanger the trees in any way, or they would have to come back to the planning commission if the designs have to change for what's being proposed for the location of the driveway. Would that be our, our engineer? Does that come back to our planning director? Does it come to the planning commission? What? I mean, in case, I, I know right up the street, a new house was developed. They had the same issue. They had to relocate slightly in between the trees. It didn't, as far as I know, cause any problems for them, but we don't know that for certain in this condition.
Right. Well, you're correct, Commissioner Fregoso, in that staffer light in part on the comprehensiveness of the prior neighbor of the uphill adjoining neighbors project where there was a detailed arborist report and it proposed a number of mitigation measures, including spreading of mulch to minimize within the drip system to minimize compaction. The fact that it is proposed to be a gravel driveway and thus the type of impacts you get with cutting for concrete forms, et cetera. Project, the fact that staff is relocating the driveway so that it's basically splitting the difference. With all of those measures, staff is confident that the impacts on those trees will be within reason. If for some reason the arborist who is going to be making these recommendations does come back and say, in my professional opinion, I cannot, I cannot recommend relocating this driveway, then I think we'd be back to the drawing board in terms of how we probably back to the original location for the driveway and then redesigning the garage so that it would permit access from the existing driveway location.
Okay, thank you. I, I can agree with that and I feel more confident hearing that the adjacent arborist report included some of that work and recommendations that can be helpful. Thank you.
Yes, and, and for the record, I will be requiring an equivalent level of detail and comprehensiveness in the applicant's arborist report. So I expect that there will be similar measures and protections taken.
I feel comfortable with that. Thank you.
And then just completing my staff report, I'd just say that with the conditions of approval, staff recommends approval of this project. And if the commission has any other question, I'm prepared to answer.
Commissioner Jansen and then Commissioner Kelly.
This is a question for the planning director. If I understand correctly, the, the property or the house to the east is actually slightly closer to the creek. Is that correct?
Very slightly, yeah. It's, it's in, it's in a pretty equivalent location.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I have another question for staff. Can you tell me whether stormwater retention or detention is required for this site?
Yes, the, the standard mixed up Marin County Stormwater Protection Pollution program requirements are that it net zero. So when we get into the, the nuts and bolts of the drainage plan, they will be required to result in no net increase in off-site runoff.
Okay, considering that they're steward of the creek there, I thought it was important to ask that question. And do you know whether this particular site has the occasion of cheating rain coming across Cascade onto the site from the north?
I do not, but the applicant is here and will probably be making brief comments. So I would consider that a direct, a question directed at Mr. Thompson, who has lived there since he was a child and his parents lived there. So I'm sure he can provide us lots of information about that.
Great.
Any other commissioners with questions for staff? All right, I have a couple of questions. I feel like putting. I feel like putting in this question about. How else should we be interpreting? Our creek setback ordinance. Is problematic. The idea that what is the. Top of the creek bed being or the stream bed being the stream bank or whatever word. Is being subjective. And to discuss the issues about adding complications with slope. It almost seems the inverse literally of the issue we were dealing with with the ridgeline. And how do you measure the protections afforded? In terms of the areas that are geographically impacted and preserved and conserved and protected by these ordinances. And in that one, we had a very difficult time. Identifying the lateral and vertical. Dimensions of the areas that were protected by the ridgeline. And as you may recall, we were not in unanimous agreement on recommendations as to how to interpret that after a great deal of time and expects. And conclusions that there had to be a fair amount of common sense. Used when one applied the ridgeline or not protect. The flats, the parcels and the flats from. You know, the. Because they were in the ridgeline technically when they were right up against the creek. And now I find there's an opposite desire to. Limit the buffer zone around creek beds. And one of the things I did was look at our general plan. Which talks about the ordinance and what it wanted us to do with this ordinance, and it wanted us to apply to more than Fairfax Creek and San Asamoah Creek. When you go back through the conservation element. Specifically talks about. This, and I don't want to get this into. My two cents as opposed to a question, so I'm gonna. Basically say, Ben, I don't understand. This overlay of average hundred year flood plain. Versus standing in the creek bed and seeing how high up to the top of the creek bed it is. The other side of that. Creek right there is our open space. Trail to the Edgar Grove, so I'm very familiar with that part of the creek bed there. And I am really having a hard time. Are we saying that that red line? Is when you have a hundred year flood. And I think I've probably lived through two so far in fifteen years that I've lived here. But when we have a hundred year flood, it's at seven. Feet, five inches in that part of the creek by that property or along an eight hundred and fifty foot. Area along that creek. I don't understand that.
Okay, let me, let me try to do a better job. So what you see here, and this is based, let me scroll up on this. This is what they've got for their calculation. So they've done the flood hydrograph. And they're looking at various levels of floods, and where they have this down arrow. Here is the height in, in. In elevation based on base elevation, that's a hundred and fifty three feet. The creek bottom or the stream bed at the property is at one hundred and forty, what was it, hundred? Hundred and forty five point five feet. So through these calculations, they've determined that hundred year. Is seven and a half feet above the stream bed at this property. So then you go back to this drawing. And what you say, see is, okay, so you're standing in the stream bed and we know at this location. When there's a hundred year flood, it's seven and a half feet deep, which when you go out to the property, you know, it's. It's awe inspiring to realize how much of volume is coursing down that stream. But the idea is, we know that that's a, a, a seven and a half feet. So then what you do is you draw this horizontal line. Across and see where it intersects with the bank. Okay, that is the, the boundary of the hundred year flood plain. So this seven and a half feet, well, so what the town regulations say is the setback is twice the hundred year flood. Boundary or the depth. And so instead of seven and a half feet, you say it's two times that or fifteen feet. So you start at the stream bed and you go up to fifteen feet. Now, they didn't. Do a, a, a line here. But basically that height intersects at two times the hundred year flood boundary, it intersects approximately with the top of the bank. And so what, what you could see here is before, even before you get to the break of the slope, which is another twenty feet. You've got this two times the hundred year flood. A hundred year flood depth. And you know, you're, I, I appreciate your comment about the challenge of being subjective where again, you're simply looking at a. A hundred year, you know, what looks like the stream bank because downstream, the next door neighbor downstream and I, you were out at the site, so you know what I'm talking about. It's got this low bank and then a flat area, and then it continues to slope up. Well, those type of shelves are not uncommon in natural hundred year flood plains. In fact, that's fairly typical. Instead of having a deeply incised stream like we see. Everywhere in Marin because we've channelized our streams. What you have is a place where the stream starts to meander and it creates this fertile. Area where it, it only floods every once in a while and drops its sediment and then retreats back to its normal channel. And so that next door neighbor. At the top of the initial steeply slope bank is well into the hundred year flood plain and the flat area behind it. Is still into the hundred year flood plain. So a calculation like this would capture that because it's not subjective. That, that neighbor would, you, you would, when you did the cross section, you would see it go up and then flatten and then go up again, and it would probably be more or less. Well, in any event, so. That's what staff is saying. Yes, it would be nice if we were to. Modify our regulations to clarify that when we talk about creek bank, it's the hundred year flood plain boundary. But we don't have that, so staff is relying on historical standards. And the fact that other jurisdictions have used the hundred year flood plain. As the determinant for basing subsequent regulations. And as a practical matter, when you do that, and if you. Respect those setbacks, it does afford a really nice buffer from the stream. So that's both, you know, habitat, riparian, a riparian zone. It, it avoids people putting structures that are subject to impacts from, from flooding, et cetera. I hope that helps explain.
Okay, thank you. Could you stop sharing so I can see the other commissioners? I'm not sure I'm finished talking about this, but I'm definitely finished with my questions for staff. So.
Oh, and regarding capturing some of the intermittent streams, more intermittent streams and tributaries to these mainstream streams. That's a great topic for further exploration because. Once again, if you start crowding those, those creeks, those seasonal creeks, some are intermittent. That flow all winter and dry up every summer, some are ephemeral, they only flow during storm events. But I think that consideration of those zones and their unique values is worthy of consideration, but. It's, it's, it's a long discussion item, and we would have to start making, you know, judgments about where we draw that. Boundary and protections.
Yeah, I'll note that many jurisdictions will take the. Center line of the creek. And just draw a boundary like a hundred feet. Or fifty feet on either side of that line or something like that, and. There's not as much. Question about where's the top of the stream bank. But I think you yourself acknowledge that we know where the top of the stream bank here is. So anyway, I'll. And I don't think it's based necessarily on the hundred year flood, so I'm gonna, I guess the other question. I changed my mind. The other question I have is, did you think about asking the applicant to apply for a variance and making the findings? Necessary. For providing a variance to the creek setback. And it's given the history of this location and the very small. Additional. Area that, that they're talking about expanding the back there.
Well, I could expand this to a more global discussion that also relates to this. As a general rule, when you're looking at regulations, you typically discourage applicants from applying for variance. Those. Standards and, and limits are there for a reason. They've been duly deliberated on by jurisdictions. And so typically in a staff role, we discourage people from even applying for variance and we typically, unless it's something. We have a couple of things like the combined side yard setback where it seems like every application fails to comply with that, so everybody gets a variance, which when, once again, when you look at the findings for variance. Sort of negates the whole purpose behind that. It's supposed to be a unique circumstance, but in this case. Our, our default is always to say, no, you need to try to comply and in this case, provide the information. That documents it, and staff was pretty. Confident, looking at the depth to the stream. From the house, the, the, the flat area of the house that it was going to be okay with a hundred year flood.
Well, we'll see how the commissioners feel about that, but. I know of nothing that would prevent us from making the findings and granting variants regardless of the staff report tonight if we so decided, right? Do you know of anything?
If, well. The first thing you would have to say is, what is the determination of stream bank? You know, we're going to go completely subjective and say it slopes, therefore it's a stream bank. Therefore, the property on the opposite side has a hundred foot tall stream bank, et cetera. So staff would not recommend that, but if your commission were to make that determination, we would probably have to renotice it. And base it on whatever. Determination your commission made as far as what you believe the stream bank is in this case.
Commissioner Frigoso.
Thank you. Through the chair, I'm adamantly opposed to doing what our honorable chair suggests. And thinks that. The staff report is right as it is. I think it is. Unconscionable to hang this hat on this one particular applicant when everyone up and down the creek. Has been in the same position without having these new and onerous requirements, and no, I would not. I would not entertain.
If, if I could hold on one discussion, I was just trying to get questions. And I would welcome your analysis after we close the public hearing, so I do appreciate it. I don't want to interrupt you, but I do want to limit the pre-hearing. To the questions for staff and, you know, I, I am. Thank you. All right, no further questions, then I will ask. Tamela to let the applicant. Join us, I believe Mr. Thompson is in the audience. Good evening, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, you have been promoted. You can unmute yourself now.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm very well, thank you. Interesting discussion.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have a question for Mr. Thompson? All right, Mr. Thompson.
Not hearing, I guess, not hearing any other questions. I don't know if this is a question or. An encouragement for you to raise your roof as suggested by, by staff. I, I would hope you would consider it. If you don't have any clear reasons not to.
I do not have any clear reasons not to. I would want to discuss it with my architect, Mr. Fernandez. He wasn't able to join us. He just had a knee replacement and he's. He's under the influence of medication right now, so, so he's at home. But I'll, I'll be happy to talk about with him. I'm just starting to kind of understand what that means in the, the language of architecture. So. Yeah, I'm totally open to that.
And, and the report is written, is written in such a way that approval of the project gives you that. Option, should you decide to move in that direction, so. That wouldn't require that you come back to the commission in, in any way if approved this evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Thompson, can you tell us, do you get cheated rain coming across the road? Were you from the uphill side?
Well. I'm not exactly. Clear on what cheated rain means. You know, I've definitely been there through, through some pretty good rainstorms. I wasn't living there through the flood of eighty two or, you know, I was, had my own. Family being raised up in Nevada, but not back there. Yeah, it rains pretty hard sometimes, you know, that sycamore trees. Buffer it a lot. You know, those, those are big trees that have been there my whole life, so. You know, I, I don't know. Really too much. How to answer that question.
Okay, I, I can just give you a follow up, maybe explanation of my question, see if it. So it's a more solid answer. I, I walk down that road a lot. And sometimes my kids like to walk down to stomp in the puddles and rainstorms. And I know that raining does, you know, tend to. Cross that road as it's going from uphill side to downhill side, and some of the properties along your side can get pretty soggy. And I'm just wondering. I'm not familiar with your particular residence in a rainstorm, so I just thought I'd ask the question.
What, are, are you referring to water that's accumulating on the ground on the property?
Yes. Does, does rain run across the road onto your property?
No, no, it, it does run across the road a bit, puddles in front of the property and then works its way down to the, the closest culvert. There's a culvert. Just to the. To the west of me in front of the, the house that was just completed. And then there's another one down the, down the other ways, the ways. But, but water's never accumulated or run through the property, no.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. If you could stand by, we're gonna open up the public. Comment to the public now.
Can I make one, one quick comment?
Oh, please, sure.
Well, just in regards to the driveway and where, where I'm requesting to put the new driveway. The entire history of, of myself and my family living there, we've parked cars between those two trees. And still continue to do so. And from what I've noticed, there's been no. Adverse effect on the sycamores. They just keep getting bigger and bigger and stronger. So, you know, hopefully, you know, an arborist will come and say, yeah, you know, do something similar to what, what my, my good neighbors, the Maddens have done. You know, build up a little. Six inches of mulch or something like that to help absorb. You know, cars crossing over the, the roots at that point. And that's what I had to say about that.
Thank you. Okay, please stand by and we will go to open the public hearing now, and I'll invite. Any members of the public to raise their hand if they wish to. Make a public comment and I'll ask. Ben and Linda, if you're still around, if we have any email comments.
Checking my email now. None.
I don't see any either online.
Okay, and I don't see any hands raised. So with that, I will. Close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. And Commissioner Frigoso, I'd love to start with you if you don't mind. I don't want to put you on the spot. But. Can you help me understand? But can you help me understand how we can sort of read language into what I consider sort of the straightforward language of the setback ordinance, which doesn't talk about hundred year flood planes at all. We have other code provisions that talk about the, we have a whole flood plane management section of the code. There's also note that we have a JDUAD provision that has the identical language. We've got seventeen oh forty-eight oh one L, which talks about the same buffer, which is more recent than the creek setback. And there, again, we don't mention this idea that this language, twenty feet or two times the average depth of the bank. And how we get to hundred year flood plain as the marker on average depth of the bank is just what I'm having real trouble understanding. And it's not trying to make life difficult for the applicant. It's trying to ensure that what we're doing is, you know, the proper reading of our municipal code, our town ordinance. So I just wanted to get some feedback from you on how you see this as being, you know, we, we have to read something into this, if my mind not clean in the, in the code.
Okay, basically, and I don't think this is the appropriate time and place to have a full-fledged discussion about that code. But my sense is that, yes, we've always gone with this twenty feet back from the bank. But if we ask every single person on this Zoom call where the bank is, we would have twenty different answers. I'm sorry, did, was someone calling my name? Oh, okay, we'd have twenty different answers. And, and I appreciate the analysis provided by Quest Consulting, the engineering group, their assessment of the bank and the hundred year flood, which as we all know, happens much more regularly these days, every decade, if not sooner. And I think that is a good marker to determine the, the depth of the creek. You're not going to measure it when it's lowest. You'll measure it at a relatively high point. And where that point comes into the slope of the land is considered the bank. And so what I appreciate about this calculation is that they have exceeded the twenty-foot simpler requirement of our code. And, and so they are not being given a, a less restrictive, they're not, they're not doing something that doesn't fit within that twenty-foot bank where no one can really tell you what the bank is. At least this lets us know what we're talking about. And so for that reason, I, I don't feel we should change those that this is, if you want to go in and take a look at that and change what our current code says about the banks, and that's a whole other discussion, and we shouldn't hang it on this one project. And I believe there is a more than sufficient space, more than most of the neighbors have, between the end of their property development and any portion of the bank of that creek, from where it begins to slope to where it hits the hundred year flood zone. And so I don't see why we should beat that any further with this particular project.
Could I say something?
Yes, please, Senior Planner Neil.
So Ben actually came up with this example, and it is a good one. So we have a creek that runs along, it runs along the houses that are on Creek Road. And it keeps running past the parcels on Forest, right? So the houses on Forest, the creek bank never, it never makes a break. It goes straight up to Forest Avenue on one side, but on the other side, right? It does end at a lower elevation for the houses on Creek Road. So Ray Rosinsky, who was our town engineer, for, you know, he, he came up with the determination that we really should be using the one hundred year flood because you can have different creek tops, you know, creek bank tops on either side of the, of the creek. And on some sides, it doesn't end until the road. So your creek setback, you know what I mean? It doesn't take a break for a long distance up the hillside, which is why we started using the top of the bank is the hundred year flood depth. Because on one side, that would be like right, right at the houses. And on the other side, it goes way up to Forest Avenue. So on that side, you have to somehow use a reasonable top of bank, right? Does that, does that help at all, or does that make it even more confusing?
Okay, so we're still talking about the words "top of bank", right? Because those are the words, all right, Commissioner Swift.
So I wanted to talk about this as well. I don't understand why staff asked Quest, Questa Engineering to determine the required creek setback based on the hundred year flood line. There is nothing in our code that talks about that. It talks about top of bank, twenty feet or two times the average depth of the bank, whichever is greater. When I look at the plans, there is the surveyor plan, page V1. And the surveyor identified the top of the bank. He also identified the flow line of the creek. So if you look at that, again, based on what our code says now, and you make the calculations, it looks like possibly the application is within the creek setback based on that. We have a method, and we have used that before with applications that have come before us, where we have looked at a variance for a creek setback for properties. And there are findings in seventeen oh two eight that, I'm sorry that staff didn't look at that and, and in discussion with, with the applicant. But I don't see this as the place to arbitrarily change how the code is written. I like the project. I think it's a great house. But I think it's in, as our code is written, it is in our creek setback. And I think we should be looking at verifying that based on what the code says. We've got a surveyor's sheet here that has the top of the bank identified, it has the stream bank, the the flow line of, of the creek identified. And based on that, if it doesn't meet our code, then we should be looking at and discussing with the applicant coming in for variance that might be looked at favorably by the planning commission. But I'm concerned that we're looking at arbitrarily changing the code as it's written with this application. And I'm quickly gonna, I'm quickly gonna put my video, am I mute on? Because I'm just putting my puppy in her crate right now.
Can I just, have you clarified something? I guess not.
Well, yes, go ahead.
Oh, okay, what, where is it that you identify the top of the bank?
It's the plans, it's V1 of the plans.
V is in victory, one, topographical exhibit. And it is, I don't know, three pages into the document that we have the link to in our packet.
Did you say V is in victory? I don't see, I don't have a V in my packet.
So this was in the, there's a link from a
I, I, I didn't go, I don't have the link and it wasn't in my packet, so I did not review that. Thank you.
Attachment B says, plans and elevations dated received three eight twenty-one. Were provided for in the May twenty twenty twenty-one packet and are available electronically in that material. So this may be if you still have your May packet.
I have, I've also restored the links now, so you can go online to the town website. You should be able to get to the plans for four oh three cascade.
Thank you, Linda.
Go to that item under packet.
Thank you very much. You are so good.
So just for clarification, Chair Newton and Commissioner Swift, so what you're saying is wherever we see the break of slope on a property, it should be considered the bank. So if we have a property, if the downhill neighbor comes in with a five-foot bank, he basically, we just measure twice the distance from what to what, I'm not sure, right? Are we going to go to the center, the stream thread? You know, ignore the fact that streams do me under quite a bit over time. But, so we go to the center and they go to the bank and then say it's twice that distance for that neighbor, which case it would be about a fifteen-foot setback. Whereas this immediate next-door neighbor with a much higher stream bank, it's, you know, a significant portion of the site. And for somebody across the creek, they would definitely be into variance because based on some determination that a bank is where the slope keeps sloping, you basically just keep going. So as Linda pointed out, on Forest Avenue, you have the same stream. And somebody who's on the uphill side of Forest Avenue, on the hillside of, on the hillside of the stream would basically be in the, in the flood plain because they couldn't get out of that slope. And that's considered a bank because it slopes. And then somebody on the opposite side, who is probably in the hundred year flood plain, would simply have to be twice the, twice the distance from some arbitrary distance, right? Because we don't know what the bank is from, from what to the
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you, because I get your point, but I think you're taking this a bit too far. You have a topographical exhibit prepared by a land surveyor that has a line that says "top of bank". This is not an arbitrary, you know, Commissioner Swift and Commissioner Newton got out there on the land and decided to draw some arbitrary line. We're looking at an exhibit that was submitted with the plans that came with the application. And you are telling us that this arbitrary line that's listed on this exhibit, "top of bank" by these licensed professional land surveyors, is subjective and that the term is subjective as used in our ordinance. And I am challenging that because you're in Fairfax. And I've done a lot of review of creekside setback ordinances around the country and in Marin. And you see a lot of arguments about how wide or narrow a creekside setback ought to be. And we, again, are in Fairfax. So just like a ridgeline ordinance that has the potential, due to the way it's written, to cover properties next to the creek at the bottom of the hill, you may, yes indeed, may have a creekside setback ordinance that is written in such a way that you have a significant setback. And in these situations, it may be more appropriate to look at the variance criteria. And especially where there's just a minor difference between the existing building and the proposed building. I would think that these findings would be relatively straightforward to make. And I know you would not recommend a variance, and I see your hand, Commissioner Fregoso, but Commissioner Jansen is in, has had his hand up, and I'm gonna move over to him in a moment. But I just want to get this off my chest, Director Berto, because again, I understand where you're coming from. Oh, we couldn't have meant to be this wide a buffer for our creek. And I am not completely sold on that. So Commissioner Jansen.
Thank you. Yeah, it's an unfortunate circumstance we find ourselves in. I think there are two things. The, the topographic map describes the, basically the visual components of the landscape, the lay of the land. And I believe the intent of the code was to have a proper setback for biological reasons from the flow of the creeks, but the two don't match. And I think Commissioner Swift and Commissioner Newton, I think you're both right that if you take the wording as it is, you would use those "top of bank" from the survey, and you have to work from there. And in that case, I think the planning director is correct too, that would create impossible circumstances in some areas. So I think we have a, a sort of a, we have a dead stop here where the way the code is written, and it's, it's odd that we find out now because it's been in place for a long time. So what I don't know, and that is actually then probably more a question, is where that needs to go from here for the applicant? Because he submitted the application on the current, the current code, of course, our current regulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen. Commissioner Fregoso.
Yes, I do not have access to that link and those documents. I wonder, Madam Chair, if you can clarify for me, looking at the Questa report, what they call Figure Three, which is the figure that staff had just shared with us, showing the hundred year flood, where they consider to start the, the, twice the depth. On this, on this drawing that I do have access to, can you show me where the other document identified the top of the bank? Is it the same as where this document says edge of bank? Which is directly under the dark black line, the dark black vertical line of the fifteen-foot setback?
I can put that up.
I think that's correct, somewhere right there.
All right.
It appears to be where the slope ends.
If that is the case, you will notice that there are twenty-seven feet from that point to the edge of the development, meaning that this property is well beyond the simplistic twenty feet from bank that our code refers to.
Right, but it's the greater, it's either the greater of twenty feet from the top of the bank or, or, hold on, Chair, Commissioner, I keep wanting to make you chairman. Vice Chair Fregoso, the idea is from the top of the bank, the, the, the depth. So what is the, the, the line?
The depth of what?
The depth of the creek, the creek bed to the top of the bank. So you've got down where the seven point five is only partway up to that other line. You would have to add the additional space, seven point five, draw a dotted line back towards the creek.
So it's twenty-two point five, and it, it's still, the distance allowed is still greater than, even if you took that calculation that you just suggested. It's twenty-seven feet and the calculation
It's two times, so it's the greater, it's the greater of the two times.
So it's fifteen feet plus the seven and a half, twenty-two point five.
No, 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 no. Commissioner Fregoso, the depth, right? If you draw a line from where it says "edge of bank", back to that middle of the creek bed, and then take your seven point five arrow and extend it up to that line you've now drawn. I don't know what that difference is, but it looks like it might be tops fifteen feet there. I don't know what that difference is, but it looks like it might be tops fifteen feet there.
Well, it's less than fifteen feet because it's fifteen feet shown on this drawing. So if you're only going to the. Well, it would, no, it would be, yeah, it would be about twelve feet.
All right, now double that.
It's twenty four and it's still three feet less than what is on the plan, that is where the property lies. My point is whether or not we want to have the discussion. As you suggest and Commissioner Swift on what is the top of the bank. Which is Linda will tell you what got me into the planning commission in the first place. Three decades ago, I don't want to go there. We don't need to go there tonight. By either standard, this property exceeds the maximum of either number that you come up with. In either calculation. And we can agendaize, but I don't think we should spend more time. Getting into the broader issue of what is the bank.
If I might suggest something though, I would hate to see a motion go. One way or another and fail for lack of a majority. Even though I think there's some interesting interpretations of failures to approve. But I would love to get a straw poll on where this vote is headed and.
Well, don't jump ahead of me because I think we may have a way to get everybody on board. So if, I don't really want to go to a straw poll until I. Hear from Commissioner Swift, whether she has been convinced by the math that Commissioner Fregoso. Just explain to us.
No. I mean, I.
And then you'll have to explain why.
I am looking at the topographical map. Or in, in the plants and I'm looking at that and when I do rough calculations there. I'm not convinced that the property is, is within or outside.
Tell us why. What are you calculating as the depths?
Let me finish. What I am not, when I look at the top of the bank on here, it's like. One oh three point two seven. When I look at. The flow line and it's too far away for me, but it's eighty three. Something, so if you do the subtraction there and then you double that. That's greater than the minimum twenty foot setback that you need. And I don't have before me. What the calculations are in relation to. The building in relation to what is identified there and based on what the code says. Is the setback to make a determination whether it falls within the code. Or outside of the code and would benefit from coming back for variance for that distance. What I disagree with is staff's. Determination of the hundred year floodplain boundary used in the code. So I am not sure that it is outside of the setback at this point. So.
If I might.
We may not be there yet. But, you know, my recommendation would be to. Continue this to the next meeting so that staff can look at those numbers based on the code. And if it is a variance. Would be beneficial for this applicant, then to come back to get that variance. Seen by the planning commission.
Okay, I'm gonna make one, one last attempt to discuss subjectivity versus. And maybe it is arbitrary to, of staff to say it's a hundred year, but. If this property and the downhill neighbor, the downstream neighbors property were one piece of land. Under the criteria that two commissioners are proposing. If the applicant were to build his house. Ten feet, and we're just talking about this bank question, the, the depth of the bank. If we were to build it ten feet back from the top of the bank on the downstream side of that larger lot. He would require no variance, or maybe he'd have to move it twenty feet back to deal with the twenty foot setback, but just looking at the top of bank argument. He'd be ten feet back, he would be certainly in the hundred year floodplain, but. By this determination that, hey, if it, if the bank, once the bank breaks and slope, that's the top of the bank. So ten feet back, he's no longer in that top of bank setback situation. Versus this applicant, applicant who's more than fifteen feet above. The, the hundred year, well, he's, he's seven and a half, more than seven and a half feet above the hundred year flood boundary. And yet, under this determination, he would be required to have a much greater setback in order to not. Trigger the top of bank determination. And I'm just saying, you know, that's sort of penalizes what we would seem to be trying to do. Which is to say, don't build first and foremost in the hundred year floodplain. And, and as Linda pointed out, and this was early on in our staff discussions is, you know. The town engineer said, yeah, to avoid this completely subjective. Various, you know, it might even vary within a lot, right? You have a high area where the setbacks greater, a low area. Where the setback is less, therefore, let's put it in the low area. So that we don't have to deal with the variance. So at the end of the day, I think regulations should drive you towards. A reasonable and desirable outcome. And I would argue that simply looking at a break in slope. As the bank boundary would push you towards building a house where it is more at risk. Or, or, or would allow construction of properties that are more at risk rather than less at risk. So.
So to that, to that point, we're not looking at the parcel next door. We're looking at, at this application. The. Current code talks about. The average depth of the bank. So to your discussion of. The parcel next door that may have top of bank here and top of bank here on, on the other side. Of the parcel, this code addresses that. But again. You look at the parcels individually under this code and we have a potential remedy for those parcels. That fit under. The findings for variance. If we want to, if we don't feel the code. Meets our needs, then we should look to changing the code on its own. But we don't change the code arbitrarily when we look at an application.
We, we did exactly that when we approved the property next door. Just within the last year that is developed even closer to the creek. We did not measure the bank. We did not take out our measurement. We just approved it. Oh yeah, that's far enough. So.
Well, and, and that does not necessarily reflect well on us as a commissioner. So my thought, because I'd like to move this along and keep us going. And I'd like to be fair to the applicants and I'd like to honor. The, those that wrote the town ordinances as well. I would do something, I would like to make a suggestion that we could do something that lawyers always often do. Which is arguing the alternative. If this doesn't convince you, maybe this argument will, kind of a thing. We could, for example, include findings and I would ask if the commissioners would consider. Whether they could. Find that these statements would be true. That because of the special circumstances applicable to the property, including the size, shape, topography, location of surroundings.
You can't even get your dogs to agree to that. Their timing is spot on.
All right, hold on just.
That's funny.
I'm sorry. So because of special circumstances applicable to the property, including the size, state, shape. Topography, location of surroundings, the strict application of the. Creek setback ordinance would deprive the applicant of privileges enjoyed by other property owners. In the vicinity and under identical circumstances. And this grant would not constitute a grant of special privilege. Is consistent with limitations upon other properties in the vicinity and under the same circumstances. And is consistent with, consistent with the objectives of the useful code. And the strict application of the creek setback provision. In, in this circumstance would result in excessive or unreasonable hardship. And the granting of this application will not be detrimental to the public welfare. Or injurious to other property in the vicinity in which the property is situated. And I would suggest that if we could add that language, which are the findings necessary to make a variance, which I think are appropriate in this circumstance. That maybe we could craft a resolution approving the application without the need for renotice and coming back. So.
In other words, without a variance.
Well, we would include all the findings necessary to support a variance.
But we can't call it a variance because.
I wouldn't call it a variance. I would say we're granting the application.
I'd like to hear what other commissioners have to say.
I don't know from. A legal perspective if we could do that. I mean, I think. If this were to come back. Requesting the variance. Because variance has to be noticed that the commission would look favorably on it. I don't know. If we could do it. As the chair has suggested, although I appreciate her suggestion. But again, I would look to bringing it back so that we could do it. Appropriately.
I know, I like, I like taking risks, doing things a little different. Just trying to cut through some of the red tape because I do think all of us. If all things were equal, would like to approve this application. Without undermining how we, you know, read this. And without causing more delay for the applicant. Go ahead, Vice Chair Fregoso.
Okay, I would like to say that I am supportive of this project. I would like to approve it as is. I am not supportive of Mickey Mouseing a return to come back to Jesus with a variance. Because we think you need a variance when none of us actually think they need the variance. It's make work. I think I would be more amenable to Chair. The Chair's suggestion that we provide a finding. Saying to do otherwise is crazy and ridiculous and unnecessary. And let's just approve this thing. I would not, I would not vote for. Continuing it. I would not vote for bringing it back. I would not vote for making it get a variance. I would not vote for language that says, oh, we're gonna make this a variance even though it's not quite right. There's nothing not quite right about this project. I refuse to say that. And. And that's my, and don't we have, and don't we have critical things to discuss? That we should have to spend four months reviewing the same project. The way we spent three months reviewing the sign in front of the redwood trees when in fact. We should have not seen that application before us until we had our arborist report. As we know, we should have had for that project and yet we went ahead and had three meetings. I'm sorry, but that is why it's difficult to keep commissioners because we have ten meetings. About things that should be handled in one or two. And we're trying to, every time something comes up, we try to rewrite the entire code. To appease, I don't know what. And, and that's my final comment on this.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Jansen and then Commissioner Kelly.
I, I would really like the suggestion, Commissioner Newton, that you, or Chair Newton, that you brought up. But I think the underlying issue is, is more legal. The, the way it's, is shown on the survey and it is worded in the code. Doesn't give you a clear way out. So I think it's important to, and how painful it is, I think we run into something that needs to be done properly. For the very simple reason that you make a precedent. And so I believe treading careful is unfortunately the right way to go.
But what does that mean? Does it mean you bring it back for a variance? Does it mean you don't approve it? What does it mean?
What that means is I believe, and I think I'm correct if I say that everybody likes the project and would like to support it. We're basically discussing here finding a way to do so. But we've run into this snag where the, the height from the flow line to the top of bank. Exceeds that distance to the house. For reasons that we all think are maybe not right, but we can't suddenly. Close our eyes to that. It needs to be solved properly and I believe a variance is, and the way I understand it, variance is the legal proper way to do that. And I think then that's the best way to do it, not so, so much because we're worried about this property. Because then it sets a precedent and then everybody can appeal and use the same approach. And that might not be what we intend.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you. I generally agree with what Commissioner Jensen just said. It, it's tough for me on my first meeting of the night to set a precedent that. Would be, you know, possibly binding. I, I'm generally in favor of the project. It's, I think the, the building is by the same owner. Who's there for generations and he's building it literally in the same footprint. But I think as a point of order, we, we might need to unfortunately. Take a step back. I, I do want to just make sure that we maybe address any other. Concerns or comments that we have about the project before we might ask the applicant to come back. My main concern with this property, as with any that has direct runoff into the creek, is just that. I, I have a hard time evaluating this property without seeing a landscape plan. And understanding how much pervious versus impervious. Area they might have on the site. It, I did see a condition from staff with regard to pervious driveway. But that's all. That's the only thing I've seen with regard to that. And so that's a concern that I have that could possibly be addressed further. Down the road.
Yeah, that actually just reminds me, our attachments indicate that attachment D are the drainage. And landscaping plans. Which appears to be just a one page. One page attaches. So you wanted more. So you wanted more, more beef on that? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. In part, yeah.
For, for clarification, would this be, Commissioner Kelly, would this be in terms of establishing a condition that ensures, for example, that there's no net increase in runoff as a result of this project over existing?
Yes, I, I think it's just the lack of information. As far as we know, they could be paving the whole backyard.
May I ask another question of staff through the chair? If Commissioner Kelly has finished with his comment? Were, were you, were you finished with your comments? Okay. It, it's kind of a, a off the mark question, but, and, and I don't need an answer, but it's a question that I'd like to talk about some other time is, what would happen if this were an SB 35 project? With these issues of no landscaping and no definition of, of creek bank? And, and Ben, I, I put that to you, like I say, without asking for an answer now, but as something that I'd like to get back to at some point later, not tonight, but it's a question that is screaming at me as we're having this discussion. Thank you.
Commissioner Swift?
I just had a quick question for Ben. The D1 that's on attached to, just for clarification, to the July report looks like it was dated in June. But was that included in our set of plans previously? No?
Which attachment, Commissioner Swift, E?
D1. So that I think that answered my question. This wasn't a part of the May application set of plans. So this came, this was created after the May meeting. Okay, never mind.
Well, I will entertain motions. I think at this point there are any.
I would like to make a motion that we continue this application to the next, to the July, August, August meeting, sorry.
August 19th.
Thank you. To the August 19th meeting to address the creek setback and a request for a variance, discussion of a variance for that creek setback. And I'm sorry, Commissioner Kelly, did you want something in addition, or were you okay with the landscape plans that are on here?
I think we see, we need to see some definition of what is the ratio of pervious to impervious material on the site that can be handled with a landscape plan simply.
We can ask them to provide the square footage existing versus proposed, for example, maybe a little bit more detail on what the ground, what the surface treatments are. So make sure that we're not ending up with a significant hardscape situation.
Great.
So I take it your motion incorporates Commissioner Kelly's request for additional information on the pervious.
It does.
This landscaping and is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, there is a motion swift with a second by Jansen. Ben, could you take roll call please?
A fragoso?
No.
Jansen?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Chair Newton?
Yes. All right. So I will also note that we would not be asking for the applicant to resubmit or pay any additional application fees associated with bringing this back. And I'm asking, Ben, do we need to get the applicant's approval to bring this back at the August 19th meeting?
It would be appropriate for, to get his concurrence with the continuance at this time.
Hey. And I'm gonna see if Mr. Thompson is still available. And Tamela, could you put Mr. Thompson back on as a panelist so I can ask him if he will agree to come back or allow us to reevaluate the application? Hi, Mr. Thompson, we're gonna add you as a panelist. I think you're unmuted and so my question to you is, would you consent to us bringing this back at our August 19th meeting in order to hopefully check the boxes for a variance and have a little bit more information about the pervious and impervious surfaces and the landscaping plan?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Well, sure. I, I mean, yeah, I'll, I'll do what it takes to get this project going. It seems a little arbitrary to me to, you know, for the landscape because you know, people change their, their yards over time anyway. But you know, I, I have no intention of paving my yard. But yeah, yeah, we can, we can work out something a little more detailed for you, absolutely. You know, with a little more, try to get a little more clear in what I want my back patio to look like and stuff like that. Sure. What, 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 can I ask what's deep? What do I have to do to get the variance at this point to, to be able to continue with the project?
Mr. Thompson, if I could respond through the chair, the rest is pretty much up to staff. I mean, we would ask for a little bit more detail and I'll discuss that with you and your architect, but at this point, it's, it's really a noticing and then making the appropriate findings in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I did read through those findings a little bit and they're in the town code in section 17028070. Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you.
And with that, oh, and I'm gonna note that on our previous item, I misspoke when I said it was a 10-day appeal period and a $600 fee to appeal that first item. It's a $625 fee, Ben. So we'll note that for any appeals. But moving on to, should we take a quick break? Do people want a little five-minute break and we can come back here at 9:08, I think, something around there. That makes sense. Thank you, guys. We're back. Thank you, commissioners, for coming back from the break. It's always good to appreciate you guys for the, the little things you do, as well as all the big things. But I do appreciate everybody coming back from the break. We have our next staff report, which is 335 Forest Avenue.
And I just have to say that I'm really glad this item is in front of you. So the 6,500 square foot site slopes up from Forest Avenue at an average rate of 43%. In 2004, the previous property owner applied to try to create, you know, head-in parking, and then he tried parallel parking, and there were concerns by the town engineer about the roof over the parallel parking, you know, knocking the mirrors off of high, large trucks, right? So he was never able to, he never successfully completed his application to the satisfaction of the town engineers, and we finally closed the file in July of 2010. Then he proceeded to little by little excavate the hillside, right, and try to retain it in various different methods, you know, planting, sandbags, but it continued, I continued to watch it, little pieces would fall off, you know, periodically. Sometimes it would be raining, sometimes it wouldn't, it would just collapse. And so now the property has changed hands and the current owner is trying to create a permanent support for the hillside. And so it's gonna require the construction of a retaining wall. They also want to rebuild their entry stairs, which currently just go straight up. They don't have any landings, they don't meet the building code. You know, the house was built a long time ago. So the project's gonna require an encroachment permit because the wall is going to be in the public right-of-way and also needs a retaining wall height variance because of the slope, the height of the wall needs to be 13 feet in height. And our code limits retaining walls and fences anywhere along front property lines or anywhere within the six-foot front setback to four feet in height. Four feet in height is just not gonna do it in this location. So, um, yeah, it's not gonna work. So the town engineer has reviewed the preliminary engineering plans and it's for a I-beam and lagging wall, so it's gonna be the metal supports with wood. The excavation and fill amounts are not, don't reach 100 cubic yards, so the project doesn't require an excavation permit from you. We believe it's the minimum necessary to retain this hillside and, and keep the parking open for the owners. It's the only place for them to park. So we're recommending that you approve resolution number 2021-15, which sets forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval. And that would conclude our report.
Thank you, Planner Neil. And do any commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Jansen?
I was looking at the topo and it appears to be that on the, what would that be if you're standing in front of the property on the left side? Basically, everything on the left side of the stair actually belongs to the neighboring parcel. So it seems to be that the structure is partially in front of the neighboring parcel and to a little bit also on the other side.
On which page? Which page are you on?
I'm looking at page, this is SH 2.1, sheet four in the PDF.
So are you talking about the one I-beam that, that projects along into the frontage of the neighbor?
On the plan, it's one I-beam. In the allocation, it's more, but that's another story. Yeah, that I-beam, that seems to be sitting in front of what's actually the neighbors. And on the other side, it's also a single I-beam. I think it's not as concerning because it sort of.
So, so are you looking at something that looks like it actually goes onto their property or is it in the public right-of-way?
In the public right-of-way, but in front of the other property.
Yes. So the code, the code, the code doesn't say that you can't put something in the public right-of-way in front of your neighbor's property, right? And so the neighbor's been notified. I don't know whether they've looked at the plans or not, but it's actually a, it's actually the public roadway, and this would have been their opportunity if they felt that that somehow restricted their ability to use their property to come out and speak, right? People next door, they have a, if, unless I'm wrong, they have a two-car garage. And so I don't know that they would ever need this area, but when we grant these encroachment permits, they're revocable encroachment permits, and we actually document the revocability of these permits by making them sign and record the revocable encroachment document that says that if we, you know, or a neighbor or somebody for whatever reason has to get in to the right-of-way to, you know, protect their property, or the town needs to remove the wall to protect our road, we can revoke this encroachment permit and require them to remove the whole wall. I mean, if we, if, let's say we, the town suddenly got rich and we wanted to widen our roads, we could actually require them to remove their stairs or come up with some other access if we needed this area. So it's a, it's a, we call it a tempor- temporary revocable encroachment permit, so.
Yeah. A gigantic wall.
Yeah.
Okay.
Similar to wa-, similar to the wall right next door, which is pink. No, it's not really pink. It's kind of a brownish stucco thing.
Any other questions for staff from the commission? Thank you. Is the applicant here? Could you promote Mr. Moran? Ms. Moran?
Yes, Moran.
Hi. Hello. Thank you for your time, everyone. Good evening. And yeah, I wanted to thank the, the commission and everyone present. I'm very grateful for the efforts from all parties, including our builder, the structural and soil engineer, and of course, the town engineer. It is my hope that an agreement can be reached regarding the details of the construction because securing the, the hill is very important to us. Like Linda mentioned, the property has been left as is for, for too many years. There are a lot of tall and very large walls all along Forest Avenue. It's the nature of the, of the street, unfortunately. Of course, you know, securing the, the hill is critical to us, but it is also a commitment to make sure that the work is done well and with respect to, to our neighbors, of course. And if you have any additional questions, I'm definitely available to answer them as best that I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant? All right. Being none, thank you. I'm going to ask you to stick around for a minute while we open the public hearing. If there's any other members in the public who would like to speak here, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. And seeing none, I will bring it back. And thank you, Ms. Moran. I really appreciate your being here and we will close the public hearing now and stay tuned. We will have our discussion and a decision. Okay. Thank you. And I will bring it back to the commission if they feel that this item warrants further discussion or if anyone wants to make a motion.
I had a question for Linda just related to the conditions of approval in the REZO. So on page three, 14 and 15, the way I- the way I read those, they seem to conflict with each other. And they seem to be different than we normally.
Oh, yeah, you should remove fourteen. Yeah, you should remove fourteen, I don't know what I was doing there. A brain cramp. Oh, no, 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 okay. I think we should leave it in and should say any changes or modifications or additions or alterations will require the approval of the planning commission, right? And then on any modification to the conditions must be approved by the planning commission as well. Ones relating to the plans and ones relating to the conditions. I mean, I think if you're going to eliminate anything, eliminate fifteen because you guys are the only ones that can modify your conditions anyway. Staff doesn't have the authority to modify your conditions in your resolution. I'm not, so I think fifteen should come out. Fourteen should be changed to any modification to the approved plans has to come back to the commission. Right, that's what it should say. Has to come back to the commission and then any construction based on plans that have been altered without the benefit of an approved modification will result in the job being immediately stopped and red-tagged.
So you just change the words by the town engineer and director of planning services to Fairfax Planning Commission?
Right.
Commissioner Jansen?
And then I would eliminate fifteen because you guys are the only ones that have the authority to modify your conditions. And then I'll renumber.
Okay. Yeah, that's, it, I think it, I understand what, why this is needed and why it's happening and that looks good. But I did find some things that seem to be missing. And I believe they are important. And it's mostly, it's all what happens in the elevations. There are basically on both sides, so this goes towards both of the neighboring properties. The elevations don't match with what's shown on the plan. So on the piece we just spoke about, the elevation actually slowed an additional steel pile that sits, the shorter one, that sits further down down the street. And it is not indicated whether or not there's any lagging between or not between. And there is, and I, and it, yeah, so that's unclear what's going to happen there. The stair itself is accidentally omitted on the drawing as well. On the other neighboring side, there is an existing concrete retaining wall, similar problem, similar kind of solution that's existing. The tie, that wall itself is not shown, so it is unclear whether the height is the same or it's not the same or how they transition or how the safety fence that's on top is going to connect to the safety fence on that other side. Basically, those two edges are completely not defined of how those things need to connect. And I, I believe that's important, both that it works well, also that the neighbors are okay with it. And that, you know, when the building permit is submitted, it's clear what needs to be constructed. So I think I would request that we get that drawing updated with that information. On that same drawing, since I'm on that topic, the, there's a tree that sits right where the concrete wall and the new wall will meet up. So I think there needs to be some care that that tree doesn't, it probably is okay because the roots don't come out currently, so it should be fine. But I think that needs attention. And the the detail showing a cap, which is quite nice, there's a cap over that wall that makes it a finished look. On the elevations, it shows that the soldier post is sticking up and are exposed. So there's, as I said, unfortunately, it seems to be all in this one drawing. That's, by the way, that's sheet S H three zero. Altogether, there's so much missing that I would request that that get resubmitted with the necessary information.
So would you, would you feel, I'm not trying to push anything, but would you feel comfortable if you added a condition that the project plans require the review and approval of the town engineer because prior to issuance of the building permit? Because they, if you read their letter, they were, they felt there was enough information that they, that they could recommend that it go forward. Although they did, but they did want to look at the plans at the building permit stage.
I think you can deal with it at the building permit stage.
And if a tree needs to come out, if they determine that the tree needs to come out and we already have an approval, I mean, they could, they could take it to the tree committee for removal after the fact. Or we could bring it back if the tree has to come out. You could put a condition in that says if the, if the, if the, if the final building permit plans require the removal of the tree, the project shall return to the planning commission for approval of that tree removal.
Well, it would be the tree commission then, right? I.
I mean, I think you could do it, so, so when, if, if they, if they, if the application had acknowledged that the tree was going to be damaged or had to be removed by the law, they should have gotten a recommendation prior to coming to this public hearing. I wish their engineer, their engineer was here because he might be able to.
Right, yeah, so there's all these loose ends, that's, that's really the concern and not one, there's a whole bunch of them.
So I think it's kind of up to you guys what you want to do. I think, I think the wall is necessary. So I think, I mean, I would be okay, of course, it's up to you, if you just included conditions that set, that, you know, made it very clear that the construction drawings have to be reviewed by the town engineer prior issuance of the building permit. And if the construction, if it's determined that the construction is going to require the removal of that tree, they have to get a tree removal permit from the tree committee prior to issuance of the building permit. I don't know if that would work for you. They're trying, I know they're trying to, you know, they're trying to get started and get this done.
No, understood.
So it may not rain.
I, I understand. Let me see if other commissioners have ideas sparked and I'll give it a shot.
I was, I was definitely interested in providing as much detail to the town engineer about your concerns, Commissioner Jansen, if we decide to add a condition that would require the town engineer's review at the, at the plan, you know, building plan phase. If we can include some of the things that you just spoke about as examples of things that we would want the town engineer to make sure, make certain that he had considered, you know, just by way of, you know, for example, maybe in that language. Other thoughts, any other commissioners? Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, I'll just echo some of Mr. Jensen's thoughts with regard to the the missing details of how the, the wall will be resolved and therefore how it might end up not being resolved at the end of the day. I do see a detail with regard to how I think it technically will be closed off with the existing concrete wall, which made me question, I assume that concrete wall is owned by the neighbor. Do we have any verification that they have communicated with them and that that's okay and?
I mean, you'd have to ask, you'd have to ask the, the owner if they've spoken directly with them, but they did receive a notice, right, ten days ahead of time and they haven't expressed any concerns to staff.
Okay, I mean, they're literally, the design is to lag bolt right into that wall. It's not just.
I, I believe, yeah, I believe that, that they, they may be showing that in the plans, but I don't believe that the, the construction plans will, will, they be allowed to do that.
Yeah, and I assume that that wall is in the public right-of-way as well.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what the sort of legal requirements of that are.
Well, I think, I think you guys raised some good points. So I think you can say, the town engineer should examine whether it's, whether they would support bolting to someone else's wall. I don't think we can legally do that, you know? I think they're going to have to find some other way to tie back into the hill on their own property. They're going to have to tie it back some other way. So these are preliminary, preliminary plans, right? And it does create some issues. So if you can, if you can, you know, I, I believe you guys can craft the condition. It's going to be going for, the final construction plans will be subject to review and approval by the town engineer. And you can say, you can say, please have the town engineer address how the, how the, is that the west side of the wall? How the west end of the wall will be supported without, without tying into the neighbor's wall and how it's gonna, how it, how it will be, I don't know what language you would use, how it will be finished off to the west of the stairway? At the west?
Right, yeah, it's particularly around pile thirteen.
How, how it will be finished off on, to the west of the stairway in a manner that will minimize the impacts on the public improvements and the neighbor's property. Right? And then the town engineer will, the town engineer will examine both of those and make sure that it's done in a way that doesn't negatively impact the neighbor's wall, which I don't think they can legally tie into it. I mean, unless they get some kind of an easement, you know? I mean, if they got some kind of an agreement before the issuance of the building permit, then we would say, okay, fine, if they're okay with it. But you can't have their wall damaging someone else's wall.
Correct. Yeah, I, it's all details and conditions. But there's quite a lot, the, the other one, so these are fairly technical in nature. I think we can put that in a condition, but the safety fence that runs on top of the wall terminates prior to the end. And the neighbors do not have a safety fence on that wall. So it is a complete mystery how that's going to work.
Well, I asked the, I specifically had the building official look at that. And he said it was, he said it was, he said it was okay. I don't, I don't, I don't recall what the neighbor's wall looks like enough to know if, if there, if maybe, maybe they weren't, either the wall predated that safety railing requirement, right? Or maybe it's not set up so you can actually walk into that area.
Yeah, tie her up, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Maybe a question for staff, is the, is this new proposed wall approximately the same height as that existing concrete wall?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is, is this new proposed wall at, at that connection point approximately the same height as the existing concrete wall?
I don't know. I can look at a, let me try looking at street view. I think it's close, but I could, you know, I couldn't swear to, I mean, I never took a tape out there and measured that wall, but if I think about my height, I think it's pretty close. Let me just.
It's, by the, for the plans, it's slightly higher than the concrete wall.
Is it, okay. Let me just see if that, let me see if that jives with what it looks like when you look on the street.
You've got the street view.
I do, okay.
Well, you've got it in attachment C, I'm looking at the second photo, attachment C.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a little bit higher based on what it looks like in the street view, right?
Yeah, I took, I took a picture of it when Linda, you and I went out in a site visit and the existing cut is higher than that wall. So, so it's going to be somewhat higher.
So I think, I think the way to handle that is add another condition and just say the building official shall, shall verify that there doesn't need to be some kind of additional safety railing that at that end, maybe a fence, maybe a fence so that nobody can walk from the three thirty-five forest off into the neighbor's yard. Is that, you know what I'm saying? Because it looks like the neighbor has a fence keeping people away from the top of their wall. So the only concern would be if someone decides to come along and walk along the top of this wall once it's done, that they not go around that tree and somehow get to the top of the neighbor's wall.
The neighbors have a tiered wall, so when their fence is on the second tier. I, I probably can, I think we can do this as a condition. I, I will need some help, chair, if you can. I will see if I can phrase my thoughts and then if you could make it more formal. I'm thinking there would be only two conditions to make that simple. I think the first condition would be that at the building permit, sit middle, the extent of the proposed wall connecting to both neighboring properties need to be detailed, both in plan and elevation. And the second condition would be that the existing tree at, so that would be the, that would be the west side of the property, that the existing tree of the west side of the property. Let me rephrase that, if the second tree in the west side of property would need to be removed, that they would need to get approval from the tree commission. The, the tree is already, it's leaning, so it's, I don't know if it needs to stay or not, that is not the concern, it's just what needs to happen.
Okay. And in your, in your, in the first condition, the middle, the middle for the building permit shall include the extent of both walls in, in plan and elevation? Is that what you said? And then, and, and be subject to a review and approval of the town engineer? Is that okay?
Yes, and then maybe to specify including connection to existing walls, extent of lagging, and extent of safety fencing. It, it needs a solution, I'm not so worried about how it gets be done as long as it gets to be done.
Okay, I think those are great. Does the rest of the commission agree? That'll make it very clear and what we do is we send the resolution on to the town engineer and to the building department. So they'll both be looking at that.
And I'm busy writing my little notes so that when Linda gives me, hopefully gives me a resolution to sign, I will reflect all these little chicken scratch here on my draft ordinance, I mean, my draft resolution. So Commissioner Jansen, do I hear that there might be a motion in you ready to be made? Oh, oh, Commissioner Swift, before we get going?
Yeah, I just had a quick question on the, the title of the resolution, where it says we're planning commission approving a retaining wall, improved parking and entry stairway encroachment permit. I would suggest that we don't have an action per se to, to approve improved parking. And I would ask that we consider just removing the term improved parking because we're really looking at approving the retaining wall and the encroachment permit.
Linda, do you have reactions to that suggestion before?
No. I don't.
Okay. So Commissioner Jansen, what I've heard us discuss is the amendment to the title of the resolution. The amendments to paragraph fourteen, where we were going to replace the reference to the town engineer and the director of planning and building services with ourselves, the Fairfax Planning Commission, where we were going to take out the existing paragraph fifteen and renumber number sixteen. And I think add now a new number sixteen that would include the language about the approval that you discussed, the approval by the town engineer and the connection to the And the connection to the. Existing walls, both walls, and the extent of the lagging and the safety. Issues as well as, I think, maybe a new paragraph seventeen, which is the. Approval by the tree committee language that we discussed.
Correct.
And if if that. If that is what your intent was, I think you could probably go forward with a motion with those items.
Yes.
Maybe just say I so.
Um, okay.
Or read the new title of the resolution, maybe.
That would be a good one. Say I don't.
It is attached A.
Yes, no, I have it here. I just had the wrong. I have the wrong, I have the wrong thing open. So this, actually, the title that I have does not include the parking, that is the confusing part. Construction of a retaining wall and reconfiguration of front entry stairs.
And I can't explain.
Right? But that is not the resolution, so how is that possible?
Does yours have an improvement permit too?
Does yours have a resolution number twenty twenty-one dash fifteen at the top of the page?
It takes me to look at attachment eight. Is the reso.
Yeah, but now I'm wondering if something didn't get posted funny to the website.
No, I should have it. I just don't have it on my screen here. I lost it, that's my fault.
That's okay. It's it's interesting that. If you have one that actually, the one that you were reading references three thirty-five Forest Avenue?
Yes, no, that's the wrong one, so I lost the right reso. I have. Not, I don't have it on my screen.
All right.
And I got.
I I would be happy to begin the motion.
There we go.
I would be happy to begin the motion. But I didn't jot down the revisions, so I will start by saying. That in fact, it's Commissioner Jensen who moved approval of. Application number twenty-one thirteen. A construction of a retaining wall and reconfiguration of front entry stairs. Retaining wall height variance and encroachment permit. Entry stairway encroachment permit. For the property at three thirty-five Forest Avenue with the. Recommended changes to the resolution. As indicated by Commissioner Jensen and noted by Chair Newton.
So that, your second of Commissioner Jensen's motion, was that what that was?
Uh, yes, that would be my second. And then I don't know if if you would care to repeat those additions. It was, okay.
Okay.
Steph, Steph has pertaining to the connections, the details on the safety walls. Connections to adjacent walls and of of adjacent property owners. Okay, that's.
Shall I call roll?
I think we're there. I think we know that we've got a bunch of changes that we're all on board with, thanks.
And I have, and I have a recording in case I can't read my own notes. Okay, Fragoso?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Kelly? Swift?
Hi.
Chair Newton?
Hi. All right.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and there is a six hundred and twenty-five dollar. Fee to file an appeal, which you have ten days to do, if anyone wants to challenge. This action by the Fairfax Planning Commission. And then I think we will go to the next item on our agenda tonight. And that is our minutes and review of the minutes from the June seventeen and June twenty-one commission meetings.
Do we not have a planning directors' report, Madam Chair? Or do we do the minutes first?
That's our first.
So the minutes are first, you're it.
Commissioner Swift.
I think that's the minutes of. May twenty-seven? Is what we have in the packet, so May twenty-seventh. And June seventeenth. I think the agenda or something may at one.
Yeah, the agenda.
Said a different date. I'm. Okay with the May twenty-seventh, but I have a correction when we get to June seventeenth.
Well, why don't you give us the June seventeenth correction? I'd like to just do a fell swoop approval of both if we can.
That works for me. Page four, the third paragraph. Under one eighty-three Tamil Pius. It doesn't address why I asked that the second sequa citation. Be removed from the staff report. So I'd like to change the first sentence after second sequa citation. To should be eliminated in the staff report as not applicable to this application. And that was the only correction I had.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have? Any changes to the minutes from May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one? And June. Seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. All right. Seeing no other comments, does anyone have a motion to approve?
I will move approval of the minutes of the. May twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, planning commission meeting. And the minutes of the June seventeen, twenty twenty-one, planning commission meeting with the minor edits recommended by commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Fragoso, and do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Jansen, and if we take role before you take. Because Commissioner Kelly wasn't at any of these meetings, because this is his first meeting. Should he abstain? I think he shouldn't. I think he just go ahead and. Give his two cents along with the rest of us, but it's just a question for staff.
I've, generally speaking, if you're not at a present, at a meeting, you should probably abstain.
I would agree with that.
All right, Linda, you could take the role.
Okay. Fragoso?
Yes.
Jansen?
Yes.
Swift?
Yes.
Chair Newton?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly is abstaining.
Abstaining. Well, and he wasn't a formal commissioner even.
That's right, he wasn't even a commissioner.
He can neither abstain or 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 vote because he was not a commissioner. So it isn't really, I guess it is an abstention because whatever.
Okay. Well, the minutes passed with the changes.
Great. Look at this, it's like not even ten o'clock yet, what's going on?
If we can stretch it to one AM.
Well, we could deliberate on the abstention versus vote prior to the, you know, that question. We could, we could continue this dialogue, but let's, let's move on to the director's report.
Okay, the first item has to do with how commissioners like to receive their packets. And the one thing at the staff level that we must insist on is. To figure out what you want to do and let's try to stick with it for the next year. So I'm not gonna. Put my foot down at this meeting, but I would respectfully request that by the next meeting, you inform staff whether it's gonna be. Paper or electronic, and we'll just go with that, because the problem is, is that. It's sort of an all-hands-on-deck drill, and if we're changing the methodology of. Packet delivery from meeting to meeting, we'll, we'll surely foul it up. So, yes, Commissioner Swift?
You're not, you're asking individually.
Correct.
Whether the individuals want their packet for the next year and in the consistency on that, you're not looking at it from a body.
Yeah.
Got it.
If you don't inform us differently by the next meeting, we'll just continue. Whatever your current practice is, but just, you know, mull it over. It was interesting this time, we haven't experienced the the disappearing link issue before. So I have to say that gives one a little bit of pause. Certainly, if. Our diligent commissioners, and it's noted, two of you had logged in within twenty-four hours of posting. Unfortunately, of course, it was working fabulously then, you know, unbeknownst that the little gremlin got in there after that point, but. To the extent that we know that, we could fix it, but in any event, just please. For everyone's sake, we we want to give you what you like and we want to be able to keep track of it at the same time, so. Just let us know by the next meeting, we'll, we'll go forward with that.
And and you'll go out to the two absent commissioners as well.
Yeah.
I know it's a big waste of paper. But there are so many glitches with technology. It it makes it hard for me to say I'll go electronic.
Yeah, the the one thing, it seems to be very helpful, is if you have a large computer screen, makes a huge difference. As we saw with. Some of our commissioners who were down to the lag bolt attachment to the neighboring wall. If you're looking at a small sheet of paper. Or you're looking, trying to look at an electronic plan on a computer, you could zoom and scroll around, but it's much easier if you have a large format screen, so. That could be also a reason why some people may wish to just grab that old plan set and lug it around with you. No judgments either way, whatever works for you is absolutely fine with staff.
I'll tell you now, I'll go with paper.
Okay, very good, duly noted.
Can I just say that remember that we do always have, you know, like if you, if you decide you don't want paper. And you think you have a project where you need to look at the plans, we have a set here in the file, so if you had, you know, if you, if you really want to stay away from paper, you could call me. And I can let you look at the file set, you know, if you, right, so.
Just not at the last minute.
Just not at the last minute.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the.
That you want my head to explode.
Then you can't steal them, I mean borrow them, I mean take them. Okay, September sixteen, sixteenth planning commission, we are going to be non-virtual. We are gonna be real, what do we call ourselves, humanoids? I don't know what, what the current expression is. Yes, the, the, the way the.
Whoa.
Protocols, yeah, there's something to consider. So people are hesitant, certainly mask wearing is fine. I'll be all lone ranger. And, yeah, it's just, it's gonna be where the town is headed. There have been preliminary discussions about hybrid meetings, we're not there yet, there are some major logistical challenges, gear issues, things like that. People have done them successfully in private practice. In government, I think it's one of those things where everybody's looking over each other's shoulders, saying, okay, who tried it? You know, especially where we're doing a webcast simultaneous, we would be doing a webcast simultaneous with a Zoom broadcast. I think there's some discussion about letting people. Log in via computer and we would hear their audio, but again, it's it's work in progress, you know, this is all the brave new world, right? And the new normal is 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 definitely not the old normal, so. We're doing our best to meet the the wants and desires of the public. The commissioners and other officials, but and I could say also that. Town committees that don't have a large amount of public interaction are going to be meeting in person, person in August. As soon as August, I think one of them actually already met in person, so heaven forbid. Yes, Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, with regard to the. Previous item of the paper or digital. If we go digital, would there be a paper copy in the room with us if we're not virtual?
Oh, that's a good question, yes. Staff always brings a paper copy and typically what I've noticed is that some of the commissioners also bring in their own copy, which is. Pretty helpful because a lot of times in that little drooling down exercise, you know, the details. Of what one person notices, it's sometimes useful for one commissioner to show another commissioner what what they're looking at, so yes, we do have copies.
Okay.
Okay, moving along.
Ben?
Just quick question, you you said September, I heard September, so that means August is still Zoom?
August is still Zoom, which will be interesting for a reason that I'll be bringing up shortly. So, um, the the other aspect is at per commission request. And within the interests of disclosure, transparency and all that good stuff. I'm, I'm just kind of giving the commission an update on the reason that I put the odds and housing element, et cetera, updates under the planning directors' comments is. It was, it's not a formal report with a staff report and attachments and things like that, it's more just. To make sure that the entire commission is appraised of the latest. Statuses and where we're headed going forward, so that every person can start to make scheduling. Arrangements and things like that, and hopefully some of the schedules going forward, you've also seen the emails going out, and I thank those who've already responded. So in terms of objective design and development standards. Staff and the consultants met with the odds subcommittee July eighth. It was a very productive to our meeting, we discussed basically how we're going to modify the draft toolkit. To. Reflect Fairfax's unique characteristics. It's noted that there's a lot of work to be done, questions such as. Historic districts were discussed, but there was no final resolution on things like that. There is a pretty, yes, Commissioner Swift?
Can you just remind us who is on the subcommittee? That would be helpful and for the public.
Yes, that is Commissioner Jansen, Commissioner Swift, and Commissioner Newton. No, excuse me. Commissioner. Green, even though he was not present at that, we also have. Cassidy DeBaker, unfortunately, it appears that her, her schedule is is not present. And Commissioner Fragoso, who actually did double duty, I would add. In doing both the odds subcommittee. In housing elements, so above and beyond and Bravo. For for that extra effort. So. There were discussions, yeah, in terms of amendments to the toolkit, it was generally agreed that probably the majority, certainly a significant number of the. Zones that are proposed in the toolkit would not be appropriate for Fairfax. There was a discussion in relation to possible ESP thirty-five Housing Accountability Act projects that would be requesting. Density bonuses and would we cover off on that? One of the astute observations made. Was we need to make sure that we're not leaving loopholes for those type projects, as your commission knows. Currently in the town and in the entire state, really. There are a number of projects, not, excuse me, let me just say this, that there's a possibility in the town. The, the, there's a possibility in the town, um, we haven't experienced it yet. Um, other jurisdictions in Marin, San Antonio, the county Nevada have experienced non-discretionary Senate Bill thirty-five projects. Uh, for which I will also say that none of the jurisdictions had any objective design standards uh to basically guide uh those projects in terms of community desires and with predictable boxy results. So the question is, is we're balancing two things at this time. One is the desire to get something on the books as quickly as possible so that whatever somebody out there may be planning and it's very hard to predict uh how that might arise, but it does come up quite suddenly um from time to time um and has in other jurisdictions. Uh, so the idea being is we don't know what the future holds. Um, and the only thing we could do is to get something on the books to uh reflect the town's desires uh in certain areas. Um, we also recognize that the draft toolkit was created specifically for Marin jurisdictions. Um, so there's a, a level of generalization that uh over time, we would hope would continue to be customized for Fairfax, but at the same time, the starting point reflects uh what is already present in Marin. Um, other aspects of amendments to the toolkit, including uh discarding the use tables. I think it's simply easier, uh, well, number one, it's very, very difficult to relate what they have in a table to what the town's current zoning regulations hold for those underlying districts. Um, the thinking right now is that would be applied as an overlay zone strictly uh to SB thirty-five projects. So we would retain for a project that didn't have the potential to be an SB thirty-five project. And there are these nuances where they could start non-SB thirty-five or SB three thirty project and then flip it to a ministerial review project. So we're sorting out how to make sure that we get all the information and the design direction we want right up front. Regardless of the status of a project going in, those are some of the little uh finer points of this, but uh, the idea is, um let's see. Yeah, so that we're not sure about exactly how the, it would be presented in the municipal code. Um, possibly as a new title, those are things that uh we're still developing. The hope was that we would have a draft ordinance ready for the planning commission on their special meeting on July twenty-ninth, uh which will still be a virtual meeting. Um, because of the notification requirements vis a vis code changes uh and the work in progress nature of what's occurring with that toolkit. Um, it will not be something that staff presents as a uh draft for with a recommendation for adopt, for recommending to the town council for adoption. It'll still be a discussion item. But staffs, it will be, you will see a draft ordinance. Um, it should be in the Friday packet uh the week prior. Uh, staff apologizes again, things are changing so quickly. Uh, and, and things like developing the zone maps um and figuring out which of these uh new toolkit zones would be applicable where um, you know, obviously we're already integrating prior commission direction, but uh you will see a great deal of uh additional information such as those diagrams, those overlay diagrams. So the twenty-ninth, we have uh quorum um already committed of your commissioners committed for that again. Uh, staff salutations for the extra duty uh that you do on a volunteer basis. I hope people in the community uh are aware of the, the selfless work that commissioners do um at these meetings. Um, and there's some appreciation expressed from time to time. In any event, we will be uh presenting the overlays, the revised toolkit um and likely scheduling uh a commission meeting uh with a recommendation of, of uh adopting or recommending for adoption, uh a draft amendment to the town's code. Um, and that would be in August. We'll have to see what the packet looks like for the regular meeting. It would be neat if we could do it there uh without dragging that meeting into some all-nighter situation. It depends what the rest of the agenda is and how comfortable the commission is with the uh material that's presented on the twenty-ninth. So that's the latest and greatest uh pertaining to the odds work that we're doing. Housing element. Um, staff and EMC planning group have been very busy uh since the last time the commission had any discussion about this. We've been reaching out to virtually every town committee uh and, and, and having meetings with them. We had a great meeting with age-friendly Fairfax. Um, we attempted to meet with the racial equity and social justice committee. However, because they were one member shy of a quorum. Um, we still made a presentation and the good news about that was there were about thirty-five people in the audience, uh the virtual audience. So we had wider attendance than we often have uh at these groups. We've also met with the chief of the Marin wildfire prevention authority. Um, and I could say that the safety element is taking shape, uh a pace. Uh, we will be returning to a special meeting of Res J uh in, in, um, gosh, what day? Oh, on the twenty-ninth, um, which staff won't be able to attend that obviously because we're going to be at the uh planning commission's special meeting on odds. You can see how these projects start to overlap. Um, we will also be going to the tree committee uh to discuss some of the safety element hazard, fire safety concerns with them and, and encourage some uh comments and feedback from that group. So, and we're also hoping to uh set up meetings in some format with uh representatives of the firewise groups. Uh, we're still trying to work on the scheduling aspects for that. Um. In terms of the schedule going forward, uh as noted in an email, and I think the commissioners have already responded. I believe everybody who's on this call or in this meeting has already responded. So the other ones, oh, we're still, there were one shy then. Um, we do have a quorum who can attend. Um, I have confirmed that already. Um, so uh consider that meeting that evening taken. Um, we will present. That's on the evening of August twelfth, Thursday, August twelfth. So, um, yeah, Norma, I'm not our commissioner for ghosts. I'm not sure if you, you're going to be back. I think, actually, I think you said you would be.
Well, I can't make it.
Okay, very good. Um, so that's going to be a lively meeting. Um, look for emails uh kind of uh leading up to that. Um, we are also uh getting more active with our Fairfax Speaks dot com platform. Um, I would just want to put out a, a virtual plug uh for anybody who's listening uh to please go on to that site. Um, look at it. Um, I, you know, preferably register. We've had uh more than three hundred visits already and dozens and dozens of people who've signed up. So uh I would also request that commissioners um encourage people with whom they uh contact to get to that site and tell us what you think. Um, because the more feedback, the broader the community base we have, the more diverse the, the individuals. Uh, the better we can represent the varying needs of these various groups in our community.
There's a link on our website now?
Um, that's a good question. Um, there should be, but I know there's a link on the town website, if that's what you meant. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, sorry. Um, yeah, there's a, on the front page, there's a housing element uh nu- under the news category, and then you can link through that to a brief blurb which has a link to Fairfax speak. So yeah, anybody who visits the town website or just type in Fairfax Speaks dot com. I just did that tonight and it's working fine. So, and I, I would also suggest or request that commissioners who continue to have any uh suggestions about the website itself and, you know, continue, keep up with those comments because we're doing a little nip tucks to improve clarity. We've gotten, based on some of the feedback we've received already, we're trying to uh make a few changes to basically improve the the clarity and functionality of that site, but um, it's, it's, it's working right now and we just need to get more and more people involved. Uh, we will be making a big outreach and engagement push in July into August. Uh, we're going to be working with the library, uh with the chamber, with businesses. Uh, we, we need to reach out to employee groups. Uh, we're going to be working to uh connect with renters. Um, so we're really orienting this update to reach groups that have not heretofore um been involved in housing element. And that's one of the specific goals. We think we can do much better than has been done in the past. This is consistent with the furthering of fair housing, which is a key attribute of this housing element update uh under eight, uh SB six eighty-six. Um, I should also state that the town did appeal the regional housing needs allocation uh numbers that were the draft numbers that were given to Fairfax, um acting on direction from the town council. Uh, staff prepared uh an appeal and cited various criteria for that. Um, this will be posted on the town's website shortly. If you'd like, I can also uh forward that appeal and attachments to your commission directly. Um, but it should be listed on our website, on the town website very shortly. So for the reasons that, you know, we've all heard before, um mainly pertaining to uh fire um and evacuation issues, but also uh reflecting the fact that Fairfax already has a jobs housing imbalance and that the provision of hundreds of new housing units will make that imbalance worse, actually not improve it. So um, does, does your commission have questions? Commissioner Swift.
So, um the housing element project timeline. What we have, I think from June. I guess the question that I had, maybe you're going to wait until you have a staff report, is how current is the work? According to the project timeline that we have. Cause there was an open house plan for July nineteenth. Um, so I'm just trying to get a sense of where we are in relation to the timeline. You mentioned doing a presentation before the Res J and you said that they didn't have a quorum. So you were thinking of going back to them. Why is a quorum, if these are just um informational presentations? And maybe that's my confusion. Why is a quorum necessary to go back? Or are you asking for some kind of approval of something with that? So maybe you can do those two questions first before I go on to my other ones.
Right, well, we're always seeking a dialogue. And uh unfortunately, with the lack of a quorum, they had to be silent. The town attorney was there and she was very specific to that, that don't provide direction. This is just a group of people talking online, basically, um, who, who happened to be, you know, half of the total makeup of Res J and, and a majority of the members, current members, but not enough to have a quorum. So the idea is we're dealing with topics like affirmatively furthering fair housing, again, a key attribute to getting a housing element adopted in this cycle or approved by the state in this cycle. Um, that we need to uh engage with heretofore marginalized groups. Um, Res J uh is obviously in a position where they uh can represent individuals in groups and have contacts uh and can encourage participation of those.
Okay.
Another group. So, and, and I would also point out that when we are meeting with groups like the uh age-friendly Fairfax, um, they already have um some very specific ideas about steps, policies, programs, et cetera, that the town could do. So it was a really fun uh discussion with them to go down that path and recognize that with Fairfax's rapidly aging population. How do we make sure that our housing element um plans for their current and future housing needs? So that's what we're doing with every group, with the tree committee, for example. Obviously, fire safety and vegetation management and policies or regulations that relate to that, whether it's, you know, fire department, uh, fire safety work and things like that. Those are all the specific items that those people have information and views on and uh have been selected to represent the community on. So they're, they're the good groups to do that.
Right, so how current is what we have for the project timeline versus where we are in reality?
If I had to generalize, I would say we're probably a month behind schedule. But i- and I was speaking with EMC uh the other day and I said it's probably when we go to the next formal commission meeting, um, we need to update that schedule. So it's, it's, it's one of those circumstances where, for example, with Res J. Um, you know, we, we knew we needed to have some kind of a give and take and that, that actually we're now on basically two months uh without.
Okay. All right, um, you mentioned that Fairfax filed an appeal. Were they bagged? So two questions on that, since that was a few days before, I believe, the deadline. Did, was it filed timely?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second part of that, it sort of talks to um the Fairfax Speaks website. Um, and you had mentioned that, you know, to continue to give feedback to you on the website. So, you know, several of us gave feedback at the beginning. I think the subcommittee gave feedback and a lot of that hasn't been changed on the website. So I just want to put that out there that you had input from a lot of us that I just took a quick look and didn't see those things addressed.
Okay.
Along those lines, um there's still only one item under, in the library, under the town documents, and that's the existing housing element. We don't have the letter that um the town council did in the fall related to the A-bag numbers on there, and I would hope that um, the appeal that was filed would go under there, under the town documents. Um, you only have the housing element under there. You don't have any of the other existing elements that are going to be reviewed on that. Um, and then you had put out an email on the August twelfth asking for an August twelfth meeting, but it wasn't really clear what the intent of the meeting was and the expectation. I think it was August twelfth.
Yes, um, I think I, I said we would be looking at housing site options. So this is going to begin the process of exploring um housing site options and strategies uh relating to those. Um, this is kind of a big tent idea where and this is in connection with the website, obviously, um, but the idea is to start with uh as many options as possible and solicit feedback from everyone. Um, what their opinions of those uh options are, and I'm sure some of those will be met with universal uh dislike and uh would be rejected on that basis, but the idea is we won't know until we uh circulate those options. So we'll have map, we'll have diagrams and we'll be asking people. In fact, we
So.
Could we get some of that in advance?
Yeah.
So, so from the st- the standpoint of that August twelfth meeting, then I'm assuming that there is an idea or draft of what would be coming to us then of those site options.
Well, we're about a month in front of that meeting, so it's, what we're talking about is, is, it's not even mapped.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's discussions. Yes, it's it's discussions, we're, it's work in progress right now.
Okay, and how many registered users do we have of Fairfax Speaks?
Um, I think it was about forty in terms of registered users and over three hundred visitors, so. Let's get the word out. We're, we're, we're probably going to be at the food pantry, at the farmer's market. Um, and we'd like to hear your viewpoints, uh, on what's a good way to get the word out, probably. Uh, post up outside Good Earth, um, since that gets a ton of traffic. So the, as I said, you you'll also see a banner stretch out across, uh, Sir Francis Drake. Or I guess we're not calling it that these days, but at the typical location, so. Um, the idea is direct them all to the online platform and and get people registering. Um. We thought we had it in the newsletter, um, but with, uh, the town manager's departure, I think there was a little hiccup in that. So certainly, uh, in fact, the question went out today. It's like, okay, what's the status and? And let's get it in the next one, and and so we're. Working with a kind of a shifting, uh, circumstance, but. Uh, we're we're certainly open to direction and suggestions, and it doesn't have to be at this meeting, you know, you can keep. Um. You know, shooting us emails saying, hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that?
Okay, that was my question.
Thank you.
Anyone else with the question for? Director Berto? All right. Thank you, uh, Ben, appreciate it. Um. Now is the time for commissioner comments and requests. So does anybody have a comment or request before I? Mine? All right, so I want to thank, uh, Commissioner Swift and Commissioner Kelly for. Filling out my doodle poll and apologize for anybody else who didn't get it. I don't know.
For the photo shoot.
Yes, I want to try to find a. A date for that, so, uh, I asked Linda to send that back out. I added one more date to the dates that looked good for both, uh. Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Swift and myself. And I, uh, added that August twelfth. Uh, special meeting date, you know, maybe we could get together on a Thursday before our special meeting. That's another option on that list, and I also, uh, I'm hoping that our town. Uh. Former artist in residence, I don't know if, uh, Stephanie Mohan is our current artist in residence or not, but, uh. She, at one point, was our artist in residence for the town of Fairfax and is, uh. Been a longtime family photographer in my family here in Fairfax, and it's really fabulous, so I hope we can all. Uh, get together for that photo shoot and maybe, you know, Stephanie said she only needed like fifteen minutes of our time. So I tried to schedule forty-five minutes. So we could actually, I mean, you know, especially if it's before a planning commission, I think we should drink heavily. No, I don't, but I'm just saying, it would be nice to have a little, uh. In-person hello with all of you.
I'm sorry.
The August meeting is still a Zoom meeting, though.
Yes, it is.
The sixteenth is the line. Can it wait to the sixteenth?
No, so what you're talking about is September, and we're trying to, the photo shoot sooner than that. And in fact, they were actually hoping we could do it tonight. That's how soon they really want us to do it, but, uh, I I was too busy tonight to even. Harass the other, uh, commissioners, much as I love harassing commissioners in my free time.
It's August twelfth, one of the dates.
Yeah, so you'll see another doodle poll camp is coming out, Norma, and if you could get on that and. And fill that out and, uh, Brett and Cindy can let me know about the twelfth and. Robert and hopefully, uh, Esther can, uh, get on. I've talked to, um. Commissioner Green, and I don't know if he's going to be able to make it, so. Uh, we will, maybe we'll have to cut out a picture of Phil Green's face for, and hold it up for the camera.
What about our recently departed commissioners?
What about our recently departed, uh, commissioners? You want to have like the. To bring out the historical commissioners of the Fairfax.
I mean, they, they were on just this year.
Yeah, well, um, Norma, we could talk about that or or talk to Anne or Stephanie. Um, the ask, it's difficult enough just to get the current.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, we want the current, that that's fine.
Make my life more difficult. But anyway, so that's my ask for all of you to to take a look at that message and that do a poll and and hopefully Stephanie will as well. Stephanie, if you're listening. And, um. I also wanted to just add that. I, um, I really enjoy, uh, being on the commission and. Having different opinions and everybody being collegial and, uh, respectful. And I have so many different elements of my life where I find that. People cannot, uh, agree and disagree with civility and, uh. I really enjoy being on, uh, with this group and and hope that we all, um. Continue to be the kind of, uh, commission where we can express differences of opinion and, uh, respect one another's perspectives. So I just want to say thank you, guys. I really appreciate it.
As the staff. Um, it's it's really a pleasure to work with such an intelligent, um, collaborative group of people and. Uh, obviously bring a broad range of backgrounds and viewpoints and yet still manage to. Function very, very effectively, and I would put one caution, when you do get together, no talking shop, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of like you could all be at a cocktail party, but you can't talk planning business. I mean, that's obvious, but you'd be surprised, sometimes those issues come up, so.
We did this, when was the last time we did this? It was a couple of years ago at, uh. It was outside the women's club and there was like a town event.
It was like a dinner or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Volunteer.
Yeah, it was a volunteer thing.
Yeah. It's been a while.
Is it, will I be dress code for the photo shoot?
Dress. Just be dressed.
You must all wear purple. Um, all right.
We must wear clothes. That's a given.
But it doesn't have to be a dress necessarily.
All right, you guys, is there a motion to adjourn unless there's?
I so move.
And I've got a second.
That's a second.
One of the commissioners could second it, that would be great.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, guys, have a great.
Thank you.
Night, everybody.